Okay, things five o'clock. Welcome to the September 7th, 2021 City Commission meeting. We all here at five o'clock so we can go into executive session before the regular meeting starts at 5:45. So we'll save our announcements until the start of the regular session. But for now, we'll look for motion to move to executive session.
This Commissioner Bowley. I move that we recess into executive session for approximately forty-five minutes, of which fifteen minutes shall be used to discuss pending litigation and thirty minutes shall be used to discuss potential litigation, all of which shall involve privileged legal communications from the city's attorneys pursuant to KSA 754319B2. The justification for the executive session is to keep attorney-client privileged matters confidential at this time. The City Commission meeting will resume in its virtual format in accordance with resolution number 7388 at the conclusion of the executive session.
Commissioner Larson, second.
Mayor Finkel, I have motion by Commissioner Bowley, a second by Commissioner Lawson. Commissioner Bowley?
Aye.
Commissioner Lawson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shipley?
Aye.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Mayor Finkel, aye. Paul D., did you want to say something before we went to executive session? Okay, I thought I heard something. Okay, passes five to zero. We'll return at 5:45. Thank you.
Larson was having a little tech problem, but hopefully she's able to join us. I may have to help her out.
Sounds good. Oh, there she is.
And she, oh, there she is. Great. Whoops.
Okay, looks like Commissioner Larson's there. I think we're ready.
Sorry about that, everybody.
Mayor Finkeldie, we are back from executive session and we have nothing to report. And we're now ready to start the regular agenda portion of this September 7th meeting. Before we get going, we'll have Porter O'Neill give us some ground rules for the meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I just have a few housekeeping items for this Zoom meeting. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast on the city's YouTube channel and cable channel 25. Please remember to mute yourself during the meeting unless you are speaking. Unless you are participating during the meeting, please turn your video off. This allows the active meeting participants to be seen on screen. You will still be able to hear the meeting. When you are participating, please turn your video on. If you have any trouble, you can send me a chat. The chat function for this meeting is disabled. All chats will go directly to me. Please remember to state your name each time you speak for the benefit of those participating remotely. The city reserves the right to mute people or turn individual videos off to minimize distractions during the meeting. Now I'll turn the meeting back over to Mayor Finkeldie.
Mayor Finkeldie, thank you, Porter. I'll go ahead and take roll call. Vice Mayor Shipley?
Here.
Commissioner Ananda?
Here.
Commissioner Lawson?
Here.
Commissioner Bulley?
Yes.
Mayor Finkeldie, present. We are all present. And now we'll hear from Sheri Redeman about the public participation process.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners and staff, please remember to state your name and title each time you speak. Mayor, when a motion is made, please call on commissioners individually to provide their vote and announce whether the motion carried and the count of the vote. When public comment is sought on an item, the mayor will first call on those participating in person. Individuals wishing to provide public comment should approach the podium following social distancing and safety protocols. Participants are required to wear a mask, but may remove their mask while making comments at the podium. Please state your name before speaking, and comments will be limited to three minutes. The mayor will then call on those participating virtually. Individuals providing public comment via Zoom should use the raise hand function to indicate they wish to speak. The raise hand function may appear in different places on your Zoom menu depending on the device you are using and which version of Zoom you have. Individuals will be called upon by name in the order they appear on the meeting host screen. When you are called on, please unmute and state your name. Again, comments will be limited to three minutes. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor Finkeldie, thank you, Sheri. First item on the regular agenda is to approve the agenda. The C E Commission reserves the right to amend, supplement, or reorder the agenda during the meeting. Does any commission wish to amend the agenda? If not, I'd look for a motion to approve.
Commissioner Ananda, I'd move to approve the agenda.
Vice Mayor Shipley, second.
Mayor Finkeldie, there's a motion by Commissioner Ananda. He's second by Vice Mayor Shipley. Commissioner Ananda?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shipley?
Aye.
Commissioner Lawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Bulley?
Aye.
Mayor Finkeldie, aye, passes five to zero. Next item on the agenda is to, uh, recognitions and proclamations. And it, we have one tonight, which is to proclaim the month of September 2021 as Suicide Prevention Month. Is there anyone from the public who wish, who bought this item forward, would like to speak before I read that?
There is, Mayor.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Finkeldie and members of the city commission. My name is Steve DeVore. I am president and CEO of the Kansas Suicide Prevention HQ, also known as headquarters here in Lawrence. For those that are not familiar with our organization, we are the largest and most comprehensive suicide prevention and crisis intervention organization in the entire state of Kansas. And we're also one of the only services or organizations that provide services to all 105 counties throughout Kansas. I want to take a brief moment and express our appreciation for having the opportunity to receive this proclamation this evening on behalf of the Suicide Prevention Month. It's more than just recognizing what our organization does. It's an opportunity to recognize all of the many organizations, both locally here in Lawrence and Douglas County and throughout the state, that work tirelessly to help other people in their darkest time of need. One of the great things that this proclamation allows us to do this evening is to be able to create a positive conversation, whether it be between ourselves or whether between our own families or our friends and our neighbors, and create that environment with which we can talk about that people are not alone, that everybody is struggling. Today's a very difficult time. There's a lot of things that are weighing heavy on our hearts and in our minds. And tonight, I want to ask that it be an opportunity for us to be able to start that conversation, start talking about resources that are available, things that we can be able to do in our community to be able to help those individuals in need. So with that, I just want to, to once again say thank you for allowing me the opportunity to represent not just our own organization, but many, many other great organizations throughout the community doing this very good work on, on behalf of all those people that, that are in need. So with that, I just wish to say thank you, and we're very honored to receive the proclamation this evening.
Mayor Finkeldie, thank you, Steve. I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas in the United States, one person dies by suicide every 11.1 minutes. In Kansas alone, one person dies by suicide every 15 hours. Whereas in 2019, 523 Kansans died of suicide, leaving thousands of friends, family members, and loved ones changed forever by their loss. And whereas suicide is the second leading cause of death for Kansans aged 15 to 44, and the 10th leading cause of death for people of all ages in the United States. And whereas the Kansas Suicide Prevention HQ is committed to providing support, education, and crisis services for all Kansas with the goal of preventing suicide and saving lives. And whereas KSP HQ is dedicated to reducing the frequency of suicide attempts and deaths through training, educational programs, and outreach. And whereas far too many residents of Lawrence and Kansas suffer alone through mental health crises or suicidal thoughts. Now, therefore, I, Brad Finkeldie, mayor of the city of Lawrence, to hereby proclaim the month of September 2021 as Suicide Prevention Month and urge Lawrence residents to learn how they can help because suicide prevention is everyone's business. And Steve, thank you for being here. I'm sure everyone listening and everyone here has been touched by suicide and, uh, and it's obviously, as the proclamation said, a, a huge problem in Kansas and across the nation. And thank you for everything you and your organization is doing to help fight and create suicide prevention in our state. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Okay, we're now moving to the consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered under one motion and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on those items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Members of the public wishing to speak to an item that has been pulled off the consent agenda will be limited to three minutes for comments. First, do any commissioners have an item they'd like to pull from the consent agenda?
Vice Mayor Shipley, D eight A and D eight B.
Mayor Finkeldie, any others? If any member of the public would like to pull an item off the consent agenda, and if you're present, you can let Sheri know, or if you're online, you can raise your hand using the raise the hand function, and Sheri will call upon you.
Is there any item that's on the, not the regular agenda, but the consent agenda that anyone would like removed? Okay. Chris Flowers?
Hi, Chris Flowers. I, I'm not sure. I think, um, D nine C. The one about, I mean, if it's, I want to speak against giving out raises without giving raises to the people making less than a living wage. So if that's still up, I'd like to do that one about the budget.
Mayor Finkeldie, someone might help me with what? Number that would be?
This is Sheri Redeman, City Clerk. It's the budget resolution. Chris, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it'd be nine C.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Finkeldie, Sheri, you see any other members of the public?
Sorry, no, Mayor. No one else has an item to pull.
Okay. Mayor Finkeldie, thank you. Then I look for a motion to, to approve the consent agenda minus the three items that have been mentioned.
This is Commissioner Ananda. I would move to approve the consent agenda excepting items D eight A, D eight B, and D nine C.
Commissioner Larson, second.
Mayor Finkeldie, there's a motion by Commissioner Ananda. He's second by Commissioner Lawson. Commissioner Ananda?
Aye.
Commissioner Lawson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ship?
Aye.
Commissioner Bulley?
Aye.
Mayor Finkeldie, aye, passes five to zero. Let's go ahead and start with D eight A. Vice Mayor Shipley?
Um, this, um, I polled for voting purposes. Memory serves, I voted against it last time. For what it's worth in terms of clarification, I was concerned that they didn't provide a new traffic study. Um, and there were numerous concerns with the neighborhood that, that Mayor may not have addressed, but, um, that, that's my reasoning for voting against it. So just for voting purposes, Mayor, thanks.
Mayor Finkeldie, do any commissioners have any questions or comments on this before I open it to public comment? Looks like it's for voting purposes, but this is a public hearing item. So if any member of the public would like to speak on this item, and it's related to the S U P on 4300 West 24th Place. If you're present, you can let Sheri know, or if you're online, raise your hand using the raise your hand feature.
There's no public comment on this item.
Mayor Finkeldie, seeing none, I'd look for a motion on this item.
Commissioner Bulley, I move that we adopt on second and final reading ordinance number 9816.
Commissioner Larson, second.
Mayor Finkeldie, there's a motion by Commissioner Bulley. A second by Commissioner Lawson. Commissioner Bulley?
Aye.
Commissioner Lawson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shipley?
Nay.
Commissioner Ananda?
Aye.
Mayor Finkeldie, aye, passes four to one. That now takes us to item D eight B regarding the text amendment pertaining to sidewalk installation, timing requirements. And, um, Vice Mayor Shipley?
Again, Mayor, this for voting purposes. Memory serves again that I voted against it now because I don't believe sidewalks are incredibly important. They are, um, but that we should be looking at it far more holistically than we are. And certainly, this was, this particular, um, uh, ordinance was looked at to try to save money for builders and to make the cost of building homes cheaper, which, while it does change certain timings, by no means addresses, uh, the need to, um, fund sidewalks publicly.
Mayor Finkeldie, any questions from commissioners before I open it to public comment? Seeing none, once again, this is a public hearing item. If any member of the public would like to speak on this text amendment pertaining to sidewalk installation, please, um, let Sheri know if you're present or raise your hand using the raise your hand feature on Zoom.
There's no public comment on this item.
Mayor Finkeldie, thank you. I'll bring it back to the commission for comments or motions.
This is Commissioner Larson. I move to adopt on second and final reading joint ordinance number 9833, resolution.
Mayor Finkeldie, looking for a second?
Just Commissioner Ananda. I will second that. I didn't know if you were reading for a resolution number.
Didn't have one.
Mayor Finkeldie, a motion by Commissioner Lawson, a second by Commissioner Ananda. Commissioner Lawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Ananda?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shipley?
Nay.
Commissioner Bulley?
Aye.
Mayor Finkeldie, aye, passes four to one. That now brings us to D nine C. And this is related to the operating budget. And Chris, you pulled this item. You have three minutes.
Hi, this is, um, Chris Flowers, and, um, one question I have about, um, raises. Um, I, I think we're given, uh, all the employees, what was it, like a 2.5% um, um, raise, basically. But my question is, does that mean that those making the most are going to be getting the biggest raises while those making the least will be getting the, the smallest amount of raises? I mean, I know it's all like, they, they're all getting the same percentage, but in terms of actual dollars, we're just, we're, we're, um, increasing the, the distance between what the lowest paying job makes and what the highest paying job is. And we're also, well, you did that Green New Deal commitment or whatever, that statement, I guess. And one of the priorities to that was creating jobs with livable wages. So I just don't see the equity in this. I mean, is it equitable for those making the most to get the biggest raises while those making the least don't even get a raise big enough? So they're making a living wage rate? I, I don't see how this is equitable. And I want to say, I'm not sure if it was here, but I remember seeing this cartoon where it's like three people of different heights trying to look over a fence. And then it's like, we'll give them all this same box, and then the, the, the shortest one still can't see over the fence. So I, I'm, and then in the, the solution to the problem was you don't give the tall one a box to stand on. And then you like give the one on the end like two boxes, who's the shortest, so, so everyone can see over the fence. And basically, we have employees who aren't seeing, they're just seeing a wall, basically. They're not even seeing over a fence. And like, when it comes to lifeguards, um, I've worked with a couple of, who have worked as lifeguards. And one said it was the worst job she's ever had, being a lifeguard at Lawrence. And like, well, okay, and here's the thing, you might say, well, what skill does it take? But really, they're in charge of lives, just, and I want to say someone has drowned at a pool in Lawrence before. And just imagine being that lifeguard and the emotional trauma of trying to bring, like revive someone that died. Like, is that not worth a living wage? Is that not worth more than $10? And I was told- more than ten dollars? And I was told, I'm not sure if this is correct, but they were, the city was nice enough to give the lifeguard like five tok, like five vouchers for like, five therapy like sessions about that. And also, I, for as much as we talk about equity, we need to be talking about equity, equity when it comes to like being and how much you make. So I just want to throw that out there. Thank you.
Mayor Fingalai, thank you, Chris. Bring it back to the commission, see if there's any questions before I open it to regular public comment. Seeing none, this is a public hearing item. If any member of the public would like to speak on this item, and you're present, you can let Sheri know, or if you're online, raise your hand using the Raise Your Hand feature.
There's no other public comment on this item.
Mayor Fingalai, I'll bring it back to the commission for comments or motions. I would say, my daughter was a lifeguard, and I think this is before they got the pay raises this last year, and she enjoyed the job a lot, and she enjoyed working with people and enjoyed serving the community. And just so you know, it was a good job. So. Any other comments or motions?
Vice Mayor Shipley, I guess I wonder if staff would like to address the extent to which these raises are being applied evenly or not?
This is Danielle Bush, Cutter Budget and Strategic Initiatives Administrator. In the budget, there is a two and a half percent general wage adjustment that is included. And if you'll recall, we had conversations about really over this budget and next budget, bringing all of our compensation to market rate over those two years. So the budget does include the implementation of the three M O U groups that we have, and about five million dollars towards new compensation in 2022, with that desire in 2023 to continue to bring all of our compensation to market rate. So happy to answer any additional questions that you all may have related to that.
Mayor Fingalai, any other comments or motions?
This is Commissioner Larson, and I move to adopt resolution number seven three nine two.
Commissioner Ananda, a second?
Mayor Fingalai, there's a motion by Commissioner Lawson, a second by Commissioner Ananda. Commissioner Lawson?
Aye.
Commissioner Ananda?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shipley?
Aye.
Commissioner Bulley?
Aye.
Mayor Fingalai, aye, passes five to zero. That brings us to the public comment session, section of our agenda. The public is allowed to speak on items or issues that are not scheduled for discussion on the agenda. As a general practice, the commission will not discuss or debate these items, nor will the commission make decisions on items presented during this time. Individuals should address all comments and questions to the commission. Each person will be limited to three minutes. And before I open it to public comment, I would note there's some written communications that are in our packet, but this obviously is a public item. If any member of the public who is present would like to speak on an item not on the agenda, please let Sheri know, and you'll have three minutes.
Is there anyone that has comments on a general nature not related to an agenda item? Okay. Mayor, there's no general public comment tonight.
Mayor Fingalai, then if any member on Zoom would like to make general public comment on an item not on the agenda, please raise your hand using the Raise Your Hand feature, and Sheri will call upon you.
There's no public comment.
Mayor Fingalai, thank you. That will now move on to regular agenda items. Regular agenda item one is to receive an update on the implementation plan for City Gate Associates' recommendations. It looks like interim chief Heffley is taking the lead.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners. Adam Heffley, interim chief of police. I'm gonna be begging your pardon multiple times tonight because we're gonna be spending some time together, but I'm gonna try and share my screen. Okay. Tonight, I'm gonna discuss a couple of things with you, but first, we're gonna talk about the implementation strategy update from the City Gate Consultant Report. Before we start, I do want to tell you, many of the recommendations are in process. We are experiencing some challenges due to staffing levels, but we're working through them as best we can. Additionally, some of the recommendations are gonna require buy-in and influence of the next permanent chief of police. Short of that, we have tasked several command staff positions and myself with working on these currently. But to understand why we've started on quite a few, but have not gotten to many of the recommendations to date, but we'll go through and discuss. As we, as we look at the recommendations from the consultants, we need to incorporate this into the Lawrence Strategic Plan. Many of these recommendations are gonna come into the outcomes area safe and secure. Many, many of these recommendations are tied to community engagement efforts that are needed. Some have happened already, and some are, are needed currently and in the future. That will change over time. Our, our community engagement efforts in general have all been hampered by pandemic and how that, how that looks. Even the consultants' engagement itself, I think, suffered slightly because of the, the lack of being able to be in a room with somebody and, and have a conversation. But I think they did the best they could, given the situation we've all been dealt, and, and, and we'll move on forward additionally, once we can return to some form of normalcy. These, these recommendations are gonna be measured using progress indicators that we can find in the Lawrence Strategic Plan, and then also additional progress indicators. And, and I would say, what I'm gonna show you shortly is a, an interactive roadmap where any member of the public can look into the recommendations versus, I'm sorry, how it ties into Lawrence Strategic Plan, and then further than that, how we're addressing or plan on addressing, or what we've done to attempt to meet that recommendation. As I've said before, public engagement is going to be extremely important in this, but I need to put it in context. Public engagement events are important, but we need to go beyond just having a list of events. For years, we've had a list of different events that we've put on or been part of. The public engagement that I heard in the City Gate study was more about a, a culture of public engagement as, as to an everyday function of our job, some transparency and interaction that, that goes beyond hosting an event such as coffee with a cop. We did Coffee with a Cop for several years. I very much enjoyed it, but I don't know that it met people where we needed to meet people. I truly believe that the department got more out of it, positive interaction than the public probably did. And while I'd like to continue something like that, I don't think that goes to the, to the meat of what we need to get to in some of these conversations. What I'm presenting to you is a screenshot of a webpage that we have worked with city I T staff and some of our messaging folks to put together what, what I keep calling a roadmap to the recommendations and how it ties into the strategic plan and what we're currently doing, so that at any given point, rather than waiting for an update at a city commission, a member of the commission, internal, external, a member of the public, anybody who is interested could log into this website, click on an area, navigate to a, a specific recommendation, and then see where we are today. This is, in my opinion, how we keep engaged with the public on this, so that this report with recommendations doesn't become a, a document that gets thrown in, in a drawer and referenced, you know, every time budget comes around or something to that effect. For lack of a better way to put it, this keeps us honest with a, hey, are you constantly working on this, updating it, moving forward with things? The other thing that I need you to know about this is this is going to be an evolving thing. The, the recommendations aren't static in my mind, or in my opinion. They're gonna evolve with the needs and, and service levels that the community expects. They're gonna evolve with technology, and they're gonna evolve in relation to staffing and how we expect law enforcement to police with the community. So when this site goes live, which I hesitate to put a date on, but sooner than later, you will have the ability to click on any one of these findings and follow it to a trail of the rec, I'm sorry, the, the concerns or deficiencies, follow it to a recommendation, see where it ties into that strategic plan, see where it, where we are in the process, where our notes are, and then link to documents that show how we've addressed this recommendation, be that policy or memo or some other documentation or, or other function. That way, there's some interactive ability, so that if someone has a specific concern, they could delve into that, but if they just want to look through the whole thing and, and spend some time going through it, that, that there's enough there to answer questions. We listed a handful of different recommendations that I probably improperly called completed, because as I've stated previously a few minutes ago, completed is, you know, probably not the best term. These are constantly evolving things that shouldn't be static and should not, we should not rest on, well, we've checked that one off, move on to the next. I think they all, or at least the vast majority of them, should have some additional follow-up and a revisiting of pretty frequently. But I'll go over some of the ones, and we can discuss specifically where we're at with these. Recommendation twenty-three, consideration should be given to employing a systems-based advocate who can vote a hundred percent of the time supporting adult victim, victims of sexual assault or domestic violence cases being investigated by the S V U. We have an in-house grant-funded position that we've worked with the Willow Domestic Violence Center to fulfill this need. We've come to you in form of budget request to internalize this position, which what we're looking at doing is transferring an unfilled patrol officer position into this civilian position. This civilian position internal to the investigations group has been very successful, and we see a need to expand that person's interaction, that position's interaction with other, other people. Being a grant-funded position has limitations on what can be worked on through that position. However, if we internalize that, as I've gotten indication that there isn't interest in, it allows us to have more flexibility with that. Next one, formalized systems and process to pass information back and forth. We've, we've developed several internal notification systems in reference to evidence and casework that are now being used. We've implemented a solvability matrix to delineate which cases are assigned to investigations or worked by patrol or patrol investigators. Evidence processors are now communicating with patrol utilizing that same electronic system I referenced before to alleviate work they can perform. And we're trying to limit and change some of the work that our crime analysis unit does in order to create capacity for them to work with patrol as they are housed out of the investigations group. Investigators regularly attend patrol briefings as part of their workday, and that is a new function that we are seeing because we are now housed in one building. It's just not something that happened before, and it's creating some work efficiencies that we had all hoped to see. Twenty-nine, ensuring policy clearly defines a level of preliminary investigation completed by patrol officers in these type of cases that will remain in patrol for follow-up. What we've discussed is, as I've stated kind of previously, we have outlined what patrol investigators are responsible for, and we've provided written back, backing of that in the solvability matrix. So we keep pushing forward on that. But again, this is gonna be an evolving thing depending on staffing levels and service level desires of the community. Number thirty-two, alternatives to the training unit conducting background investigations. This is something we have done for some time and are leaning into more. We have detectives that when time and capacity allows, that will do background investigations of, of new officers or new potential hires in order to determine whether or not they're a fit for, for this department. We have additionally worked on hiring part-time workers, retired investigators, retired officers, to fill that need, which comes at a, at a more efficient cost, so that we're not tying up full-time employees or sworn personnel that could be working on a different investigation. Thirty-four, including lateral hires in the P T O officer program. Lateral hires have been doing this for some time, and, and we are formalizing that where they are included in the P T O program, and the P T O program itself has, has evolved in the last couple of years. This will further change when K L E T C, which is the Kansas Law Enforcement Training Center, produces the curriculum that they are going to require of all of its satellite office or satellite training sites, which we are one of. But it will not fall short of, of the lateral hires being part of that P T O program. So it, it has been formalized and will continue to be so. And then support and implementation of I A Pro Blue Teams. Now, this is an ongoing project process that has start, that started last fall, I believe. We've implemented it, trained on it with supervision, and we continue to talk about tweaks to it, because again, this is one of those systems that is going to cause ripples down the road for years, but we want to make sure it's done right. We have fully implemented the use of this program and this software. You will see products of it this, I'm sorry, the end of this year, excuse me, when we start doing our annual reporting, which will be done, and we will be back to speak before that comes out to discuss changes and how they are going to appear in our annual reporting. I'm gonna move now to the in-progress recommendations, which is probably the best way to, to label all of these recommendations. Talking about institutionalizing legitimacy and procedural justice training concepts, general orders, performance evaluations, and promotional processes. Just anecdotally, I began the Recruit Academy this year, talking with the recruits about the history of law enforcement and how that will play into encounters with other people. We talked a lot about the need for fairness, procedural justice in that aspect. So we're, we're starting when people come in the door, but what we're working on now is, is looking out for a formalized program on procedural justice and, and some of the institutional, I'm sorry, the institutional legitimacy training. This again is, is in progress, as in, we're starting to look at it, pushing into it, doing some of our internal training on it. But Kansas Law Enforcement Training Center's criteria for what we must train, I think, will directly impact this. They are not deaf to, to what communities in, in our state want to see, and I think they're gonna incorporate parts of this. If any of that is missing from their curriculum, we will of course supplant their curriculum, I'm sorry, support their curriculum with additional training. Recommendation four, maintain support for department personnel to continue strong volunteerism locally. This is something that we've always took a lot of pride in. We have many programs that, that we have sustained and some created within the city, including Blue Santa, which is one I think we're all very proud of, the Ballard Center shopping that one of our detectives has, has organized and assisted with throughout the years, spending time with kids around Christmas. We've had various We've had various officers, sergeants, detectives coaching different sports since I got hired on back in two thousand. And we've also always had at least a few people on some of our volunteer boards in the area, Habitat for Humanity being one, Salvation Army previously. Some of those deals, we have institutional support for those and and advocating for people being on them and providing time for people to to give back into the community, whether it's through the department or in their own time. And that's something that that we do care about and will not shy away from. Number five, recruiting local residents, business owners, representatives of local support service providers to serve as role players in training scenarios or internal hiring promotional panels. This is something we have done previously and we continue to do. We will explore doing it formally and more. Recently, I've had a couple of conversations with some of our support services, specifically the Willow Domestic Violence Center, and asking them to assist us in hiring a victim witness coordinator and in turn working with them on, being on a board for them, if that's appropriate. Also, we have spent some time recruiting local residents for other hiring boards. We'll probably push into that more to make it a little more formal. The training, the training scenarios is is a little bit more problematic and not impossible, but it is something that we need to think very carefully through. We have had to limit the number of our instructors and role players to meet the KLETC standards due to their desire to make sure that role players understand the training goals, nuance of different scenarios. When we start getting into scenarios, be it domestic violence or intoxicated driving or anything, it's it's very important that a trainee or a training assistant sticks to a script so that we hit all of our training goals. Again, not to say this is impossible, but we do have to be very careful in that. So that's going to take a little more time for that one to to be completely vetted and how we would train people to come in and and do those sort of activities. Number six, encouraging officers to follow up with crime victims. This is something that is, has become a difficult balance, specifically when we're short, short on patrol staffing. One way we've attempted to address this currently is set up a trial patrol investigator program so that we can alleviate some of that follow-up from the day-to-day patrol officers and have officers who have a desire to do more investigations but aren't yet to the point of a detective level work, build some of those skills. And those, those patrol investigators have worked very hard to follow up with victims, follow through on casework. The other way we can address this is just attempt to provide capacity for our patrol officers to go out and re-contact. This is also another area where a victim witness coordinator would would help our capacity and bring a different perspective to a function that that is important to everyone. And number ten, implement and the proposed command structure organizational design. This is something that we have, we have moved to with a couple of caveats. You you saw in previous meetings the moving of captains to major's position. This was entitled to match other agencies, but it also provided us room for lieutenants and room for deputy chief positions to assist that next, potentially assist that next permanent chief in meeting some of the goals that we've outlined here. What this also does, or what we've yet to institute, is the implementation of a patrol PTO coordinator position, supervisory position, and a, an additional or two lieutenants on patrol. Those positions would allow for some better coordination of training function that is PTO. They would also allow for for some additional coverage so we could mandate that a second level of supervision is present on patrol at all times. That hasn't been done, to be blunt, because we can't take any more people off of patrol and any promotion would ultimately trickle down to a patrol function. It it would, patrol's numbers today would wouldn't support that, or if it did, we would need to to make some restructuring cuts or something in order to facilitate that. I am very supportive of those positions and want that to happen. But I also need to make sure that we're able to fulfill our service requirements that the community needs. Recommendation eleven is create realistic supervisory staffing minimums and determine priority, priorities necessary to fulfill them. Now, this kind of goes along the same, the same as the previous. However, we have determined that we will have appropriate levels of supervision, meaning two people present at any given time in order to make sure that we can put supervisors out in the field. It is, there is a lot of administrative work for a supervisor that could, in theory, keep them at a station, answering phones, doing paperwork, administrative work. And we have heard and felt ourselves a strong desire to push supervisors out into the streets so they could be on calls, ensuring that we're doing the things that we need to be doing. That is in place, but could only get better with some movement on staffing levels and additional supervision in that area. Recommendation twelve, establishing minimum staffing levels for frontline supervision and mid-level management. This goes along with the recommendation eleven, basically the same answer. Recommendation twenty, an efficient program that allows the Humane Society to collect fees that are reimbursable to the city. Speaking today about some issues, it's my understanding that we are deep in the process of of correcting some inefficiencies that were identified by the consultants in this, recommend this report. There are some things that are going to have to be brought back to the city commission. I believe they are codified in ordinance and will need some changes to that ordinance. Some of it's as simple as fines and fee scheduling, I'm understanding. But everybody is willing and wants to streamline this process to avoid confusion where there, quite frankly, just doesn't need to be any. Number twenty-eight, establishing goals and objectives for new patrol investigator approach and develop means to qualitatively evaluate the results. We have established the goals and objectives for this program. As I stated before, providing patrol level investigators to be able to work and learn cases that typically patrol officers have to do in between calls. This is something we're very excited about, but it comes with a cost of numbers to patrol. So we are definitely wanting to pursue this program. I personally struggled with developing a means to qualitatively evaluate the results, you know, considering case closure is not always the best method. Sometimes it is, but but does that get to community expectations of what we're doing? I I struggle to to find that correlation. So we'll have to work on some different way to measure that. That's why it's an in-progress. Using the same hiring process regardless of a candidate's experience to ensure comprehensive assessment for their fit for the department, number thirty-three there. This, we found somewhat problematic. In a time where we're trying to secure quality candidates that have many, many employment opportunities today, we need to be nimble and able to move through processes in a, in a a time that would be different than our classic recruiting, testing, testing board interview process. Now, that being said, I don't want you to think that at any point we are shortchanging any of our our assessment points. These people still go through psych evals, board interviews, background investigations, and any other normal onboarding process. But I I had a good example given to me earlier. If if we find a local candidate who is not with the Lawrence Police Department, but in the region, maybe one of our partner agencies, they're going to already know our systems. They're already going to know our ordinances in theory and and the state laws of Kansas and have certification. They would be onboarded much quicker than somebody from, say, Missouri or Nebraska, who, while they have some reciprocity agreements, would need to go through a training course, would need to learn the difference, the nuances of state laws that are different, local ordinances, and then all of our local computer systems. Even somebody from Kansas, you know, in another region, while they still have a lot of similarities in state law, understanding court, case law, things like that, they will still not understand necessarily our in-house systems and would require additional PTO time before that becomes second nature to them. What we would still do is put them through that PTO process where they can demonstrate those skills and show. But again, we don't shortchange on the, the points, the assessment points, which are extremely important to all of us. Recommendation thirty-eight, requiring annual training for all department employees in the areas related to public engagement, equitable policing, implicit bias, procedural justice, and cultural competency. We do train currently and we train annually in implicit bias, and there are parts of that training which talk about procedural justice. But we're anticipating additional required training through KLETC. And then again, we will supplement any of that where it lacks at all with additional training. I've personally vetted a course recently that I'm, that I'm wanting to bring to the department when we're able to do so in a manner that meets our, our struggles, but also does it in a, in a meaningful way where we can have some discussions. I I'd like to avoid video training in some of these topics just because it it's important to have discussions in a lot of these trainings. And sometimes a video course will get the job done and sometimes it it just, it needs more, so. Recommendation fifty-seven, assess the need for a business data analyst to relieve, relieve invoicing and contract management from IT and determine if the position can be combined with other needs. This is something we made a budget request on requesting someone to fulfill that position of accreditation manager, research analyst or business analyst. Some of the need there that they are referring to with invoicing and contract management, we've been able to address internally with the technology and and some systems that one of the majors has taken point on and pushed forward. Sixty-seven is big cognizant of potential of false positives created by increased complaints being captured with the ICE, the use of IA Pro Blue Team software. Sixty-seven and sixty-eight are kind of the same thing, which I alluded to earlier. Prior to our yearly reporting, we're going to bring this back and have a discussion about what the number of complaints mean. What we need to do and what we haven't done, in my opinion, very well as a profession or as a department, is explain kind of the inside baseball of what a complaint versus inquiry. Well, if I call in and say I didn't get a callback, is that a complaint or is it not? And we need to have some conversations specifically about that so that when that yearly reporting comes out, everybody at least understands what we're talking about. Those are the kind of things where I think we really could all benefit from some robust engagement on any one of those topics. The rest of the recommendations, we've yet to lean into too far. And as I've said before, some of them are because of the scope and some of them are because of our, lack of our internal permanent chief position. But I don't want you to think that we haven't picked up and started working on some of those. We just haven't got to the point where I'm ready to sit down and talk about what we have done on those specific ones. While I have you here, I wanted to go over a couple of updates in other programs that I know are of interest and do beg for some, some feedback, programs that, that people are used to and people aren't used to. First Patrol Service Dog Program. Until recent, until recently, the Patrol Service Dog Program consisted of two handlers and two patrol service dogs, Deuce and CB. Both dogs are extremely popular online, much more than anybody else who works here, which we all kind of find funny, but it is what it is. Unfortunately, Deuce had a, has a medical issue with one of his legs. And and speaking with some professionals in the veterinarian field, it was determined that he would be best suited to retire and enjoy the rest of his life as a non-working dog. We have acquired a new patrol dog, patrol service dog, and he will be beginning training this winter. I'm sorry, beginning training now or shortly and should be back on patrol this winter, provided everything works out. Secondly, we need to start session planning, which is a big part of recommendations that we got from the consultants. We have had to to begin this process for CB and his handler with that officer looking to retire next calendar year. The spin-up on a, a quality canine is is some time and we don't want to be behind in that. What I'm asking for feedback on is we have talked topically about the need for an additional patrol service dog in different areas. Meaning, there are many times where we'll have a gun crime or a robbery or something to that effect in which a firearm is, is ditched or thrown out into a yard or something to that effect. There are service dogs that are trained just to sniff out firearms, ammunition, things of the like. What we're looking for is any feedback on, is that of value to the community? I can think of a lot of instances where it would be of a benefit, but expanding a program like this has a lot of moving parts and it would be something that we would want to hear people weigh in on, on whether it's something we pursue. I neglected to write it on here, which probably you appreciate, but one other change to the PSD program is we're acting proactively and we are not training the new canines on marijuana scent detection. It is fairly widely known in the field, as I understand it, and I am truly a layperson in the field, that as marijuana laws evolve and it becomes legal, it is much easier to not train a canine on a certain scent than to try and prove them off later. Kind of hearing community desires, we just elected that to make this decision and this move. But of course, any feedback on that is welcome and would would be considered. Next, as part of the city's draft public safety camera policy, which I will provide for public input later, we are looking to start a UAS program. We have demonstrated the need for the technology in crime and crash scene documentation. We have requested assistance from walkers to township and Douglas County Sheriff's Office numerous times in the past six months to the point where we're kind of out, outlasting our welcome. We have used those typically in fatality, accident investigations, crashes, person searches, and several different death investigations, including homicide investigations. There is a draft public safety camera systems policy that's been developed based on ACLU recommendations and President Obama's National Institute of Justice Report, which was produced in two thousand sixteen. It is my understanding that as this has come up previously, it is, it's a fairly hot-button issue, or at least it was at the time it came up, rather than try and and write what somebody would want and then come back and address concerns. We started out with some of the documentation that was out there, like from the ACLU, and looked at it from that perspective. I I think it is a good draft policy that addresses many concerns, but I also know that there are things I don't know and we are seeking feedback and any concerns on that draft policy Uh, so that we can have some um, dialogue with it. Uh, in fact, there's a couple of groups that have been present when this has come up in the past that. That I I I plan on reaching out to directly just uh, to have some conversation with, because I think that would be better than um, than doing like a. Uh, a large meeting where um, some people who've voiced concerns before are drowned out. Uh, lastly, on an update, I wanted to provide where we're at with our special victims unit. Uh, the unit began last year. Uh, it investigates or reviews all crimes against children and sex crimes and some domestic violence crimes as they're able to do so. Uh, the department, as I spoke about before, has partnered with the Willow Domestic Violence Center to start um. Utilizing that grant-funded victim witness advocate. Uh, the advocate has been hugely beneficial for um, the division. Uh, but is limited in into what she can work based on the grant. Uh, the grant is a very good thing, and we're interested in assisting the Willow. Um, with however we can to support um, the furtherance of that position and tie into them more and not less. Um, we did request a transfer of that unfilled sworn position to a permanent internal victim witness coordinator in the twenty-twenty-two budget. Uh, and are working hard to move towards that direction. I I think it would not be surprising if in a year or two, we saw a need to add a second. Or additional victim witness coordinators. It's something that. Uh, unless you've been through um, the criminal justice system as a victim or a witness. Uh, that it's hard to know how uh, people navigate these systems and having somebody that can do that with them benefits us all. Um, additionally, the SBU is is looking at the need and the possibility of adding an additional civilian investigator. We have many people in this jurisdiction or in this region that have years of training. Um, in other uh, areas that tie into us. We have partners in DCF. We have many social workers in the area, mental health workers. Who could bring a different perspective to an investigation division, specifically in an SBU, uh, that I think we could leverage. Uh, into a really good work product in a time where it's harder and harder to identify and hire uh, police officers. I've just talked for a long time, but if you guys have questions, I would be happy to answer as best I can.
Mayor Fingal, I thank you. Chief Heffley had a lot of information there as well as your written report. And I'll start by asking the commissioners if they have questions. And then we will open it to public comment, and then we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion.
This is Commissioner Nanda. Um, I'm very excited to hear about the update on the SVU. Um. Not only does it align with my day professional life, but I think that these are important elements, and I'm I'm really glad to see that they're being implemented, and. I've seen communities have really, really good effect with um, uh, victim witness coordinator or um, that kind of PRA advocate. Who shows up um, to offer services immediately and the impact that can have. So that's really awesome. Um, I had some questions around um, the the seventy-five um, recommendations. I wanted to see if you have a timeline. You'd mentioned that KLETC kind of training restructure. Do they have a timeline for when they're implementing that?
Uh, yes, our next academy will be run utilizing that new curriculum. It's my understanding, and I apologize for not having exact dates for you, Commissioner. I'm sorry, I should have said interim chief Adam Heffley, um, for not having exact dates for you, but what I can tell you is. Uh, during a the current or previous process at the Kansas Law Enforcement Training Center, they had run two classes. Uh, one class is the uh, legacy class and one class is this new model. And are seeing great success with it. It's our understanding that our next academy class will be run under this new curriculum. And when I say our next class, we have uh, recruits, six recruits in academy right now. Uh, who will graduate uh, later this fall, early winter. And uh, the beginning of the year is about the soonest we could start a new academy. That academy would be under that new curriculum.
Okay.
Oh, I should have added, you brought it up, and I just completely missed it. Uh, looking at sheer numbers, our SVU. Uh, from January first to date, uh, has processed and closed a hundred and twenty-five cases. Uh, it's kind of a scary, sad number, but also uh, and that's just the closed cases, not the ones they've investigated. Um, but I just wanted to throw that out for some context, uh, for the volume of cases that this group is working. Uh, it's my personal opinion and and um, where I think we need to go is to to invest more in that group.
This is Commissioner Nanda. Thank you for those numbers. I think, too, those numbers indicate a willingness to report. Um, we talk about on campus, if you're getting more reports, it doesn't necessarily mean that it's happening more, but that there's a trust established. So that's really awesome. Um, my second question was around, so um, I was looking at um, kind of the categories that they broke those down into. Um, and the only one, aside from the one, there were two that only have, or three that only have one. Um, but the only, I I think that the CPRB is probably outside the scope of just, you know, you're reporting on that, but. Um, the one that didn't have any that had ten or eleven, I guess, total recommendations was the promotion of reward. Um, do you have any kind of timeline regarding any of those, or at least starting to look at those?
Yeah, so uh, and let me take that as two separate ones, please. Adam Heffley interim chief, please. Um, the promotion process um, classically has changed with um. The head of the department, the chief, uh, chief has decided at times that we do a full board, at times we do a full board that incorporates outside people, and at times it it doesn't. Uh, this creates confusion, angst, and and hard feelings all around. Uh, the the uh, the lack of structure there. Uh, we're working on identifying what would be the best structure. Uh, that would give um, the most uh, evidence-based, I guess, is all I, is is what I'll call it off the cuff. Uh, process that we can trust. We're getting a good candidate who um, wants to do what the department wants to do moving forward. Um, so we've looked at a couple of different models. Uh, there's one that's uh, civil service testing. Uh, personally, I'm not a huge fan of that, but I understand the value in it. Um, what what I'd like to do, and I think what I've heard talk about is a combination of that plus uh, an interview board that includes people outside the department. Um, I am gonna ask uh, uh, Major Anthony Bricks, yes, who is with us to weigh in on this, if he's willing to do so.
Uh, thank you interim chief, Major Anthony Bricks. Um, I I wanted to touch on that because um, we we were able to. Start working on this process through what was done recently in the negotiations, and in the negotiations. There was a development of a police officer two program, and because we didn't have any. Established parameters for that, we were able to look at some of the city recommendations to include things like demonstration of procedural justice. Uh, to include uh, having outside uh, members be a part of that board. And really start to standardize it, and it's really good because that is now the new first level step. And we can build fro- uh, from that step, the PO two position to the sergeant position, to the lieutenant position, and so on. So. Uh, the the recent uh, contract with the LPOA has really given us an opportunity, and uh, we actually just began that hiring process as far as. Uh, folks are supposed to start turning in their stuff here in the next couple of weeks.
Commissioner Nada, thank you for that. So it does sound like maybe there are some that are even in process on that one, too. Um. So that's very cool. I think that the last one I had was with regard to the CPRB and more for staff, if there was any update regarding those. Um, five recommendations on that one. And I'm just throwing that out there with no warning, so I apologize, Brandon.
This is Assistant City Manager Brendan Maguire. I can field that question unless chief, you'd like to uh, try it out, but.
No, please.
So, I, yes, the commu- uh, the Community Police Review Board um, continues to work on their uh, proposed authorizing ordinance. Um, they they have uh, finalized their draft of the ordinance, and they are preparing for a um. A facilit- some facilitated discussions with some um, directly affected stakeholders such as uh, police staff, um, city staff. And some community members, um, especially uh, communities of um, of color and ethnic diversity. Um, and so uh, we are kind of at a point now where um, you know, city staff has what we think is an understanding of. One way to approach the uh, consultant's recommendation and be responsive to that. Um, the the police review board, um, I certainly don't speak on behalf of them, but. Um, I do engage in each of their meetings and work with them, and uh, I think that they are uh, uh, reticent to. Uh, completely uh, halt progress. Um, I think they are looking forward to wrapping up um, what has been uh, more than a year's worth of effort for them. Um, and understandably so. So, uh, we will have um, a meeting later this month, September twenty-third, where. Um, that those next steps of how do we get to a um, final recommendation that they can submit to the city commission uh, will become a little bit more clear.
Commissioner Nada, thank you all for that. Um, that's that's all the questions that I have, Mayor.
Okay, well, thank you. Other questions?
This is Commissioner Bowley. Um. Interim chief, I appreciate your characterization and your discussion about the. In-process and completed recommendations. It seems to me that these will be revisited um. On a regular basis through the accreditation process. Is that correct?
Yes, I think that's a fair assessment. Uh, this this, in my opinion, to be successful and completed in a way that it was originally intended cannot be a. One-off, you know, one-time checklist. This needs to be kind of incorporated into the culture of the department. Um, a- and that is not a, in my mind, a a process that starts on this date and ends on this date.
Mayor Fingal, I kind of a follow-up on that. I believe in the in the budget, um, there's gonna be a. A a staff person dedicated to that accreditation process, would that also kind of work on these um, updates as well?
Uh, interim chief, Adam Heffley, yes, I think that would be a great uh, use of some of that person's time. Um, additionally, our our PIO office, I think this also. Uh, begs to have a a considerable amount of that time doing public engagement. Uh, what we've looked at internally is shuffling around some pieces potentially uh, to increase our capacity in there, because again, as I see. Us moving forward, public engagement, again, is not a, it's not going to be a list of events. It's going to be a philosophy that is incorporated into the department. Uh, which uh, if done correctly, is a lot of back and forth, and not just a lot of us talking um, and and then walking away. So that is gonna require a lot of time. I think the accreditation position uh, will most likely take a lot of time. In the initial stages as we build up towards uh, meeting that accreditation standard. Uh, but there should be capacity, and I'm committing myself, whatever role I play in the years to come here to assisting and working through a lot of these processes. Oh, I should also say, uh, several other majors have been tasked and lieutenants have been tasked with working on this. This is not a me thing. This is a. Department-wide thing. I I didn't want to give that impression. I apologize.
Mayor Fingal, we knew there was lots of people looking at this, so we appreciate the work. I just wanted to clarify one question. On the UAS program. You're asking tonight just for some general feedback, but then the idea would be for you to continue to gather feedback and then eventually bring a policy. Forward at some later date, correct?
So so my request tonight is, we have a draft policy that, and and I. I I probably titled this slide incorrectly. Uh, we have lacked as a as a organization, a policy in place to cover all public safety camera systems. Um, you know, intersection cameras, building security cameras that are tied to city facilities, all of those things. It's needed to be complete. Uh, UAS systems are essentially flying cameras. Uh, this is something I'm fairly passionate about, and um, will speak to till you tell me to stop. Uh, but uh, my desire at this point is to push out this policy uh, for public consumption. And have them come back with, this is my concern, and see if we can address their concern, or at least provide an understanding of of our use for it. Um, it it is something that we are woefully behind on on technology, and we're having to request assistance on. Uh, crime scenes, which just, in my opinion, is unacceptable.
Thanks, Commissioner Lee. Just I want to clarify, I um, I seem to remember that we did draft a policy. Um, for specifically, I think at the time it was downtown cameras, there was quite a bit of um. Public input, and I frankly was very satisfied with um. The policy. I haven't looked at it today, but at the time, I remember being um, very impressed with the work that the police did with the public. Um, are are you suggesting um, incorporating that or retrofitting that? What 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 are you suggesting?
Yes, um, I I actually was one of the people who worked on that policy previously. Uh, this is something that I've been involved with in one form or fashion for better part of a decade. Um. Uh, yes, there was a lot of good work done on that policy. This kind of brings it together. One of my concerns and one of um, our our shared concerns. Is that downtown camera policy didn't cover uh, cameras in parking garages, cameras anywhere else. Uh, if you're going to have cameras for use for public safety, it needs a strong policy that prevents misuse. And that that is very upfront about how long, who has it, where it lives, all these things. It's it's extremely important to do this right. Um, I I had attended some training with um, one of other department members, and the suggestion was brought up of. Uh, we know some of the concerns that are out there. The ACLU has not been shy about this. Let's go to them, go to their written document and start with that, and I think it's a wise move. Um, but I I also uh, know enough to know that I don't know everything, and I'm sure there's something we missed. And I'm sure there's concerns that we didn't see, and I and I want to hear those uh, as we um, as we put this policy uh, to where it needs to be.
This is Commissioner Nanda. I will say, hopefully, eventually, there's a movement toward the term remote piloted rather than unmanned.
Uh, in the industry, you actually call remote pilot. Um, you're a remote pilot in charge is is one of the terms, so they're getting there. It's a grow, it's a, it's a growing field.
Mayor Fingal, I, and maybe this is a question for Brandon. Um. Interim chief Heffley talked about some of these um, will be dependent or will be looking at the uh. For the interim chief, I mean, for the permanent chief to come on board, and can you just give a quick update? I mean, I think I understand, but for the public, where we are in that process and. Um, where we might expect that to end?
Yes, Assistant City Manager Brandon Maguire, um, thanks for the opportunity to provide that update. Uh, we are currently, um, our our recruiter uh, is accepting applications currently and through September twenty-seventh. That's when the application period closes. Our um, community panel steering committee is uh, going to review applications. Um, a few weeks after that, and then we'll have uh, first round interviews. Uh, I believe it's the first week in November, and we should uh, be all complete with final round interviews by the third week of November.
I think that, thank you. Other questions before we open it to public comment?
Thanks, Commissioner. Maybe I'll just ask one quick question about um, the um. Sorry, let me check your uh, you, it's like UAS program, um, I'm no, uh, the PSD program. Um, the animals that are trained, they have one or two things they specialize in. They don't specialize in everything. Is that correct?
That is correct. They can be cross-trained. Um, our our canines are. Um, again, please forgive me if I butcher terminology, because I'm not, I'm a layman in that field. Uh, they are trained for drug sniff, drug odor sniff, and they also are trained for patrol service, which means they will back up their partner. Uh, can track, things like that. They're not bomb dogs. They're not cadaver dogs, things like that. When you, the more functions you train, and then again. Layman's opinion, the more functions you train, the less uh, they are specialized at one and good at one.
Mayor Fingal, I'll go ahead and open this up um, to public comment. If any member of the public would like to speak on this item, if you're present, you can let. Sherry know, and she'll call upon you, or if you're online, please raise your hand using the raise your hand feature. And you'll all have three minutes.
Does anybody have comment on this one here? Chris Flowers.
Hi, this is Chris Flowers and I just want to comment, I guess, about that my, the first thing would be the drug dogs. I don't think we need dogs sniffing out drugs at all. As I'm, I'm, I'm very glad that they're, they're doing away with training them in the smells of marijuana, but I, I don't think we should be using drugs for that. Like, I, I don't, like, why, we shouldn't be really trying to come down on drugs. Like, I think the winds, we were talking about the winds of change blowing in, in, in the future, I think it's going to be more than just marijuana. So, so why? And also before, before marijuana was becoming more accepted, there was still complaint like how reliable is the, that there's a smell, like as a reason to search a car? So that's just kind of perpetrating that idea that it's okay to start searching cars because there's a smell of drugs. So we should do away with that. And also we need to make sure that none of these dogs are ever used as attack dogs or going after criminals. Because I, I don't think animals should be being put in the line of danger. And also I, I guess that's all I'm going to say for now. Thank you.
Is there anyone else on Zoom who would like to comment on this item? Mayor, that's all the public comment.
Mayor Fingalai, thank you for that. We'll go ahead and bring it back to the commission for comments before we close this item out. Anyone have any comments on this item?
This is Commissioner Nanda. I will just say that I'm glad to see that progress has been made on several of the items here. I know that having a police chief in that position that's not interim will make some of those a lot, not necessarily easier, but certainly have a consistent voice and leadership to implement those items. I, I think that there's, you know, miles to go before we sleep, but I'm really glad to hear about the progress on this. I definitely think that the community engagement piece is going to be pivotal. And I'm glad to see that there is some progress on some of those, as well as the training piece, just making sure that we're getting those in there and hearing that, you know, not only are they looking at what KLET C is doing and implementing that, but looking at where that may fall short on some of those very important items that our community has identified, that our, our officers have identified as pieces that they need more information on. So I'm very glad to hear that. I think that we have two more items this evening that will probably speak to some of these other issues. So I look forward to those conversations, but I'm really thankful for the update on what's going on, what's going on with the CPRB and how we're moving forward on the recommendations from Citygate. So thank you.
Mayor Fingalai, I guess I'll go ahead and jump in and echo the appreciation for the work you've done. Interim Chief Heffley on this and it's your whole, whole staff, not just you, the whole, whole staff. You know, a couple of things I would, I would point out, you know, on your very first slide, talking about the changing the culture of public engagement, and that's a commitment I think is very important and I appreciated that. And also I, I know we're big on school cards, but this idea that you're going to put out a website that tracks each one of these and shows your commitment that, that, you know, visually and, and to the public that you're committed to these changes and the whole department is. And so I think that's a, you know, something I didn't expect, you know, until I saw this presentation coming out, that we would track it in that way. But I think that's a great addition. And so I appreciate that. And obviously thanks for the updates. We'll continue to watch for those. I guess I would say, you know, echo what Commissioner Nanda said in the Special Victims Unit, and I've talked with some folks at the Willow and I know they are appreciative and, and think the program is moving in the right direction and certainly glad to see that and glad to see it expanding. And I'm glad we could help, you know, on the budget side of that. And, and you know, continue to, to look for that because I do think there's more improvements to be made. You know, on the, on the drones, the, the, what are we supposed to call them? The
UAS, Unmanned Aerial System. You could call it a flying camera.
Okay. I mean, obviously I think, you know, bringing forward a a policy on that isn't, is important and, you know, like Vice Mayor Shipley said, I know there was a robust process before. So hopeful, hopefully we're using some of that same information along with the ACOU one to bring that forward. And I do think applying it to all cameras makes sense. But I do see that, you know, that, you know, the use of those are becoming more and more prevalent and and we really need to have them to stay up to date on, on the way we investigate, the way we track. And I do think it probably does spill over a little bit on the patrol dogs. I mean, I know sometimes we've in the past had to use patrol dogs to try to find people. But if you have, you know, a drone with infrared technology, that's much better for everybody. If we can use that to track somebody or to find somebody who's hiding, that's safer all the way around to use that sort of technology. So hopefully we continue to use that technology in that way, you know, pro policy. And so anyway, thank you for the updates and those are my comments. Other comments?
This is Commissioner Bowley. I'd just like to express my appreciation and, you know, echo my fellow commissioners. Thank you very much for, you know, for you, Interim Chief Heffley and for, for everyone who's worked on this.
Mayor Fingalai, there's no other comments. I think this is just to receive an update. There's no action to be taken. Vice Mayor Shipley.
I got comments, or discussion anyway, about, certainly about the UASs, is that right? And, and the the, and the, the animals. So I'll be honest, I'm one of the people in the public that's always very nervous about cameras and I disdain drones intensely. So this was sort of suggested as a topic to me from the city manager. And I said, oh no, that's going to be something I'm not going to be, I'm, I'm going to push back on. And in the same conversation, then I'm going to use the term drug dogs here, which is not the term you want me to use, but and my comment was, well, I would rather have drones if I had those two choices. And there's a lot of reasons that I could list, maybe not all of them terribly relevant here. I certainly think that there's misinformation or misunderstanding about what they do. And I'm sure that's true of me as well. So I hope you all feel free to approach me with what I misunderstand. But they are able and allowed according to our policy to attack people. And I do find that problematic. And certainly for certain members of our community for whom historic trauma with attack dogs has strong associations. That's certainly one of the reasons we should think about this. I'm not particularly worried that, you know, marijuana will ultimately be legalized. As you pointed out to me, an animal might, we, you know, evidently we have a heroin problem right now in our community and there are significant numbers of overdoses. So presumably you would have an animal who was trained to find quantities of heroin. Or you would have another animal that would find other things. So I, what I'd like is some, not just with you, Chief Heffley, but I would like some discussion in the community. And, and I would hope that the police and the handlers would engage us in this discussion because to me, some of the things that the drones do actually appear to replace some of the things that the dogs do. So I, I don't mind to give you the tools you need. That's what I want to do. But I also don't want to give you two tools to do the same job. And I think that's a fair discussion to have. Do you, do you have, if, if you feel comfortable to answer any of the things I've just said?
Yeah, yeah. There is some overlap. I, I don't think it's quite as much as, as one would think. Just inside baseball, I am an FAA certificated remote pilot, UAS pilot. So I've been through a ton of training on it and, and what you can do that has crossover is an area search for a missing person. An area search potentially for a, a person running from an incident. But there are limitations in that it, it's just a camera and it can't see through things. It can't see through trees. It can't see through windows. Even with infrared, it can't see through windows. There are things that they just, they do that, that canines can't do. So I, I guess on the, on the UAS side, and I would be happy to go over with anybody who wants to talk more about it at any time because it's something that I feel very comfortable discussing. I am a little less comfortable in the discussion about canines. And I'm going to ask if it's okay for Major Cooper to weigh in on that. He's been involved with canines since their inception. Cooper, would you be willing to?
Sorry, I couldn't figure out the technology. Casey Cooper, Major, Police Department. So I was actually one of the ones that originally stood up our patrol service dogs back in 2015. I was a supervisor over initially. I would say about our patrol service dog handlers, they go through an extensive 10-week program with, it's standardized state training through the Kansas Highway Patrol. It's very intense and it's very extensive in the amount of knowledge and application that they have to go through. The washout rate is fairly high into that, not just based on the handler's ability, but also for the patrol service dogs' abilities to be able to maintain a certification. Those dogs, once they are certified, they also have to maintain certifications in the skill trait that they have. So we have two patrol service dogs that are called dual-purpose dogs that are trained in narcotics detection and also apprehension or detention and handler protection. That is the purpose of what those dogs are. They're not attack dogs. They are constantly trained and corrected on any kind of behavior. And they have to, to annually certify on each one of those, those skill sets. The difference between the patrol service dogs and a drone is a drone has its limits. You can hide under clothing. You can hide under beds. You can hide in locked rooms and a drone can't open that, that door or search that building very easily. The patrol service dogs can go in and detect based off of, give indications based off the human odor and, and activity, sight, sound, things that they hear. And they, they alert us to that danger and that, that presence of danger to where a drone could not. Are dogs going to bite? Potentially, that is how they're trained for detention or handler protection. The way our policy is and the way that the handlers are trained is the detention and even the deployment of a dog on a possible apprehension is for a high-level felony. It's not for misdemeanors. It's not for crowd control. It's nothing more than for high-level fleeing felons that are disobeying lawful commands that potentially pose a threat to society. Or pose a threat to officers when they have to apprehend that individual. That is, that is their purpose. We never would send a dog into knowingly send a dog into harm's way. You know, our handlers care about their dogs. They live with them. So they're not going to knowingly put a dog into a house where that dog would knowingly get harmed. Now, could it happen? Absolutely. Because we're not dealing with somebody that is compliant with law enforcement. And they may be in an altered state to where they're not going to or they're violent anyways. So that could happen. That could happen to a police officer that is going into a door as well. So you know, in terms of engaging the, the public, our handlers do, I used to have the numbers, but I don't supervise them anymore, but they do public demonstrations on a regular basis. They are out in the community, whether it's with a kennel club. They've done them for all kinds of neighborhood associations. They are always willing to go out and show what the dog's capabilities are, answer questions. So I know they would be more than willing to do it in this topic as well. So what Interim Chief Heffley was talking about, and I'll just expand on this a little bit and you can tell me to be quiet if you want, is on the bomb detection. The difference on the bomb detection dog and the drug detection dog, besides the obvious, is bomb detection dogs hit on 13, I think it's 13 different odors from gunpowder and everything that makes up an explosive. They can come in, we've used them days after a subject may be on like a, a shooting or an armed robbery. And they've been able to come in and scour the neighborhood, do a track back where that individual is at and find a firearm that was ditched and ditched, like in leaves or brush. So those dogs are valuable in the sense of, we're finding firearms that a kid could walk by heading to school or anybody could walk by and pick up and have something happen. It's, it's valuable and evidence, detection as well. That's the other thing that, that these drug, the drug detection dogs can do. All of them are, they find articles. So anything that would be ditched during a foot chase or a, we're trying to, to search a crime scene, they can find just about anything. And what I would say is a handler, you know, our, our two and soon to be three handlers, they do a very good job of, of displaying this stuff. And then like I said, I know they would be more than willing to, to go out and give public demonstrations or engage anybody in conversation.
Just Interim Chief Adam Heffley, just to add Commissioner Shipley to the end of that. All of these things, and you could throw firearms in it, tasers, any of these things, and all of these things rely on good policy. And that is something that is extremely important in how anything is used. Major Cooper brought up using canines for protests. We don't do it. We're not going to do it. You're not going to see them there. I do understand some of what you're speaking about and the use of, of those, of canines historically. And, and that's not what we're doing. That's not what we're about. And we're demonstrating that with our policy interactions. And I'd be happy to discuss that further at any point.
Can I add, can I add one more thing? It's Casey Cooper. In addition to the policies, what I would say is police service dog programs in law enforcement. You know, all reference our neighboring agency in Topeka, their program is over 67 years old. We have seen the evolution like we've seen in policing, the tactics changed. You're correct. Back in the long, long time ago, they used to use them for crowd control and different things. We have evolved in law enforcement to understand that is not the best application for that. There is so much case law out there that restricts and prohibits when a dog can and cannot use. That is also what guides our policy and that is also what guides training that, that our handler gets through.
Mayor Fingalai, any other comments or feedback?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Norris and I'll just add a few words. Pretty much agree with what all the commissioners have said, said so far. I'm particularly glad to hear regarding the cultural change needed for public engagement as well as, and that bodes to the trust issue that we have with certain members of our community, with the police. And I'm glad to hear that that's, that they're looking at more of a cultural change versus just attending more meetings and so forth. I'm also looking forward to the website. I think that's a really great idea and I'm hoping that that website is developed so that it includes documentation and reports, policies, whatever it takes to actually explain how the recommendation has been completed and the process for ensuring that it stays up to date.
Mayor Fingalai, if there's no other comments, thank you, Chief Heffley. Well, I'm sure we'll have you back on the next item. But before we do, we're going to take a 10-minute break and we'll return at 7:35 for regular gen item number two.
We're ready, mayor.
Mayor Finkel, I, thank you. We are back from our break. I'll go ahead and take roll call. Vice Mayor Shipley?
Yeah.
Commissioner Nanda?
Yeah.
Commissioner Lawson?
Here.
Commissioner Bulley?
Here.
Mayor Finkel, I am present as well, and we're now moving on to regular gen item number two, which is to receive an update on campaign zero eight can't wait. And interim chief Adam Heffley will lead us on this one as well.
Good evening again, commissioners and Mr. Mayor. Uh, interim chief Adam Heffley, I am going to share a PowerPoint, but attempt not to bore you with just talking the whole time. In one second. Okay. Uh, okay, um, uh, we were asked to respond to the, um, eight can't wait, um, campaign, which is part of campaign zeros, um, attempt to address some, some specifically hot-button issues that have, uh, come to the forefront within the last, uh, year and a half to two years, but have been ever-present during, uh, conversations about law enforcement, how that works and what that looks like. Campaign zeros, eight can't wait, uh, calls for a, a ban on chokeholds and strangleholds, required de-escalation, required warning before shooting, requiring, required exhaust all F, all alternatives before shooting, a, a duty to intervene, a ban on shooting at moving vehicles, a, a require, a requirement of a use of force continuum and a requirement of comprehensive reporting. When we start into this, I, I just want to go through point by point and have a discussion, and then I'll give you the city gates, uh, take on, or the reporting on the department's position as it is, and then, uh, we can have more discussion. Um, a ban on chokeholds and strangleholds, uh, within the department. Uh, we do train on the effects, the dangers, the consequences of, of any uh, application of pressure to a person's neck or head, and how prolonged pressure, um, can up, can, can or may impact their ability to breathe. Um, the ban of chokeholds and respiratory restraints as a tactic controls someone, unless deadly force is justified, is clearly stated in the department's use of force policy, and has never been recognized as a technique in controlling combative subject. Uh, that, that is in line with our, uh, understanding of, um, best practices. Uh, there is a recent Missouri state law which bans the use of chokeholds and strangleholds, and their policy is actually a little, I'm sorry, the state law is a little less strict than our policy, uh, where we very clearly, um, set forth the requirement of justified deadly force in that situation prior to any use of this. Uh, the requirement of de-escalation. And 2015, October, uh, Lawrence Police Department formally implemented de-escalation training with the introduction of crisis incident training, or CIT. Uh, CIT is a, uh, best practices in de-escalation. Um, it has been expanded on and been incorporated to within our defensive tactics program. It's routinely discussed as it evolves as its own practice, uh, including other agencies. Uh, my guess would be any mental health, um, providers or any mental health, um, function that is, uh, alongside first responders will, will rely heavily on this. Um, originally CIT had set a goal that was, uh, I want to say roughly two-thirds of a department should have this kind of training or a little less. Uh, our department committed to train nearly 100% of its officers in CIT. I think originally we said we'd commit to 100%. Uh, logistically, that became difficult, but we still strive to meet that requirement. Um, we have, uh, partnered with Burton Nash and created a mental health team, which, um, has struggled somewhat as, as, um, articulated in the consultant report, but we're still, um, believe in the program and are wanting to expand it as personnel, uh, from Burton Nash and personnel from our side allow. Um, this partnership's been successful in assisting individuals in our community affected by mental illness, um, to, to receive the adequate and appropriate, it's probably the best way to say it, uh, treatment and resources needed. Uh, requiring warning before shooting. Uh, through department training and relevant policies, officers understand the importance of providing verbal warning preceding almost all applications of force. Uh, how we train is not, um, kind of eight whoops, sorry. How we train is, uh, most people, when presented with, uh, knowledge that, that we are going to take them into custody or, or do something to that effect, uh, fare better than, uh, than without. Uh, so warnings, of course, are the best course of action when possible. Regarding the use of deadly force, language in the department's use of force policy mirrors the state statute and relevant case law regarding the rare occasions an officer might use deadly force. Uh, and, and, you know, I, I hesitate to read it, but I think it is important. When feasible, the officer shall, prior to the use of deadly force, make efforts to identify him or herself as a peace officer and to warn that deadly force may be used unless the officer has objectively reasonable grounds to believe the person is aware of those facts. Uh, requiring exhausting of all alternatives before shooting. Uh, in any use of force situation, having the ability to exhaust all other means before shooting is certainly desired and preferred outcome. Uh, however, the desired outcome may not be practical or achievable. Um, so quoting from, uh, policy, given that no policy can realistically predict every possible situation an officer might encounter, officers are entrusted to use well-reasoned discretion in determining the appropriate use of force in each incident. Uh, violent encounters are generally fast-evolving and require split-second decisions to be made by the officer or officers at, at the scene. In these rapidly evolving situations, public safety is a top priority, and protection of life is extremely important and the number one thing. Um, continuing on, requiring exhausting all alternatives before shooting, determining if force was appropriate is based in objective reasonableness. This is a Supreme Court decision, Graham v. Connor, um, where the court said that the Fourth Amendment reasonableness inquiry is whether the officer's actions are objectively reasonable in light of the facts and circumstances confronting them. Um, things taken into account, immediacy and severity of the threat to officers or others, the availability of other options and their possible effectiveness, whether the conduct of the individual being confronted is no longer, no longer reasonably appears to pose an imminent threat to the officer or others, and, and many more. Um, as with any other, uh, case law, this is something that evolves over time and we keep, um, consistent watch on. Our policy created, uh, the company that creates our policy manual with us, um, constantly looks at case law, state law, any changes to those things to make sure that we're falling within those two things and best practices. A duty to intervene. Um, every department member is required to intervene and report without reprisal when they observe another department member violate any law or standard of this department. The following language comes from the use of force policy. Uh, any officer present and observing another law enforcement officer or member using force that is clearly beyond that which is objectively reasonable under the circumstances shall, uh, when in position to do so, intercede to prevent the use of unreasonable force. Uh, what I want to also highlight in this is there is training that, uh, I've been looking into and was bringing here to town to a conference that ultimately got canceled by the pandemic, um, that trains specifically on how to train officers to, um, to intervene. Uh, there is some, uh, thought that young officers may not react, uh, correctly and within policy if they're presented with a senior officer or some other circumstance, uh, and hesitate to intervene. There is specific training that we're looking at, um, that is being put together, um, by some federal partners, uh, specifically to train that, um, its desire to bring that in-house. Uh, banning shooting at moving vehicles. Uh, the following language comes from our use of force policy, uh, which I've included and is publicly available on our website. Shots fired at or from a moving vehicle involved, involve additional considerations and risk and are rarely effective. When feasible, officers should take When feasible, officers should take reasonable steps to move out of the path of an approaching vehicle instead of discharging their firearm at the vehicle or any of its occupants. There is, I'm sorry, I'll continue. An officer should only discharge a firearm at a moving vehicle or its occupants when the officer reasonably believes there are no other reasonable means available to avert the imminent threat of the vehicle or of deadly force other than the vehicle's directed at officer or others. Officers should not shoot at any part of a vehicle and attempt to disable a vehicle. We've talked about this in law enforcement for some time now, and it's being codified into many policies. Shooting at a moving vehicle to stop it only works in the movies or in situations where firepower is much more than what Lawrence Police officers are dealing with. The physics of an encounter between a vehicle and an officer always play out in that a vehicle wins. That's just physics, and we can't change that. There is and has been historically incidents in which an officer may find themselves in front of a vehicle attempting to stop it and discharging a firearm to do so. And quite frankly, we've approached this in a couple of different ways. One being policy of, it's policy not to do that, and two, it's common sense that it's not going to work, so don't do it. That being said, there are instances in which a vehicle being used as a weapon pursuing people or pursuing a subject or an imminent threat to life and somebody or somebody else leaves an officer with no other choice but to attempt to stop that person. And that is why you will see that while we heavily dissuade anybody from doing so, and there is a very small window in which this would possibly be an effective technique, the banning of it is not outright. The use-of-force continuum. As mentioned previously, it's every officer's desire to not use force during an encounter with an individual. However, there are circumstances where this is unavoidable. During those circumstances, every officer, as required by case law and department policy, shall use only that amount of force that is reasonably appears necessary given the facts and circumstances perceived by the officer at the time of the event to accomplish a legitimate law enforcement purpose. We do entrust officers to use sound discretion in being objectively reasonable, which is again that court standard, and is guided by our values-based policies. These are based in best practices in law enforcement, supported and reinforced through leadership, ongoing training, guides from the courts, and I will follow that with end policy. Even though the Lawrence Police Department and many other agencies across the nation no longer practice the use of a continuum or an if-this-then-that model, we do have a model of policy that clearly outlines the legal aspects on every use-of-force application and tactic that officers are trained and certified to use. Requiring comprehensive reporting. We have a very extensive and elaborate policy in place as part of the use-of-force policy that requires every member of this department to report the application of force to a supervisor. Supervisors, when available, are expected in order to conduct an investigation into the use of force at the scene by conducting an interview of the subject in which force was used on. Contact witnesses, photograph injuries, collect other evidence that may be necessary, and when applicable, take appropriate administrative actions when excessive force is used. This is part of our desire and need to get supervisors out into calls, out onto calls, I should say. And that is part of our ability to keep this, keep on top of this. Additionally, the supervisors are expected to report all use-of-force incidents as instructed by our use-of-force policy to the major overseeing the Use-of-Force Review Board. Each reported use-of-force incident is reviewed by the board to ensure that department policies and/or laws were not violated. The findings of each incident are then reported to the chief of police or, when necessary, referred to the Office of Professional Accountability for further investigation. The Use-of-Force Review Board also completes an annual report that is submitted to the city manager for review and published to the department's website, and that will not change and will continue. What we're talking about, in my opinion, is how do we, as a department, as a city, as a, you know, city government, as a community, prevent a bad event from occurring here? We've all seen various bad events occurring on the news or, you know, around here, other neighboring communities and in this community. And the goal of the exercise, in my opinion, is how do we keep this from happening here? First, we need to continue to train and evolve. Our training, from the time at which I became a police officer in defensive tactics, has evolved incredibly in how application of force is utilized. The folks that train DT now teach more distance and time rather than trying to secure people quickly. They teach, you know, walking and talking things through with people so they understand what's happening. There's a lot more thought given to how these things are done. Those are taught to new officers, and then we go back and retrain all of the old officers like myself. Second part is, we have policy that's strong, that provides discretion following law and case law. And third is, we have people, supervisors, who go out and ensure that we're doing what we're doing. They ensure that by being on calls, being present, making sure we're doing what we're supposed to be doing, and then documenting that and then providing those documents to administration where we can share that publicly. That is my opinion on how we address some of these issues. There are a lot of differing opinions on what, where we should be at in the banning of chokeholds or shooting at vehicles. I think the intent of all of these is found in our policy, but there could be disagreement with that, and I understand that. I believe we are trying to do the best, given the rapidly evolving situations that our officers are dealing with and placed in. But at that point, I do want to go through real quick the City Gates assessment of our eight points. City Gate stated, "These eight recommendations overlap now with the proposed federal legislation cited previously. Lawrence Police Department policies are consistent with many of the elements of the Eight Can't Wait movement, except for three. First, shooting at moving vehicles is not strictly prohibited by the department. City Gate agreed that, as a best practice, it's an option to be avoided, but it cannot, according to them, be categorically ruled out as unreasonable in every circumstance. We believe this is an issue for discussion between the department and the community. Second, department policy does not absolutely mandate that a verbal warning be given prior to the use of deadly force. Rather, it requires one when it can be done without endangering the life of the officer or another person. This complies with the current Supreme Court case law regarding police use of deadly force, and going forward, the department and community must discuss this issue within the context of state-federal law, applicable Supreme Court decisions, and the safety of peace officers." Finally, third, department officers are not required to exhaust all other means prior to using deadly force. This, too, is in keeping with current case law, and City Gate sees no feasible way that such a blanket requirement can work in 100% of the cases. We do believe that the sanctity of preservation of life should be the foundation of any police agency's use-of-force policy, and there should be effective training that emphasizes the development of critical thinking skills during all force encounters. Police agencies and their communities must work together so that an encounter between the police and public does not end in anyone's death. That is City Gates' assessment of what we just went over. At that point, I stand for questions.
Mayor Vingala, any commissioners have questions?
Thanks, Mayor Shipley. When you said that you watch changes that are happening nationally, are you referring to your access to Lexipol or are you referring to other things?
Both. So, we stay up to date on Lexipol. Lexipol provides constant updates as in relation to case law, legislative law, or legislation and any other Kansas, I'm sorry, federal legislation and any other Kansas changes. In addition to that, our use-of-force trainers and our training unit constantly watches for other trends. They look for case law that maybe isn't out of our circuit, but indicative of perhaps where our circuit goes. They also look for any new best practices in training. Any and all of that, it is their position and our obligation to be students of this type of information and be studying up on it. If you'd allow, I'd ask Major Cooper to weigh in as he is transitioning into the training unit.
Major Casey Cooper, just to let you know, you know, part of our jobs in command staff is to always evaluate what our employees are doing, what our officers, supervisors on the street are doing. That's also the premise behind what the Use-of-Force Board was created to do. It's not only to look at complaints of excessive force, but it's to review every use-of-force encounter that is reported to that board. What they're looking for is not just the application and how it was used, but was it used properly? Is it a training issue? Is it something we could do better? Can we craft policy to make it better? And that's really where we started looking at here in the last couple of years during the implementation of the Lexipol policy, was we started looking at how we are interacting with individuals in these use-of-force encounters. And interim Chief Heffley talked about this from when him and I and Major Brixius came on. The philosophical belief on these encounters has evolved and changed. A lot of it used to be kind of like we gain compliance and ask tell mate. Now, the way we're doing that is gain compliance through communication, using a lot more of the de-escalation tactics, trying to get compliance on the friend end so we know what the individual's reaction is going to be before we use force. But it still doesn't always mean that force is going to be not used. You know, it is a business of where sometimes people just do not comply, regardless of what policy is, law is, and our tactics. There are violent people out there that are not going to comply. So we've got to train and be prepared for all of those situations. So I would say we are looking nationally from de-escalation tactics at different levels. We're looking at how we deploy the TASER, how we use our OC spray to our firearms, to just officer presence, and how we're communicating with public. All of that is constantly being looked at from, not just the training unit standpoint, the command staff, but also as officers.
This is Commissioner Nanda, oh, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor, if you're not done, please go ahead. Okay, I was looking at today the model policy on the Eight Can't Wait website. I don't know if you all have had an opportunity to review that. And I, go ahead.
Sorry, I have looked at it, but I don't have it in front of me, so I.
Okay, well, this is Commissioner Nanda again. I think that in looking at the moving vehicle language, it seems consistent with what you're talking about in that it says, and again, this is the model policy on that site. Officers shall not discharge a firearm at or into a moving vehicle unless the occupants of the vehicle are using deadly force other than the vehicle itself against the officer or another person, and such action is necessary. And then shall not place themselves in the path of or reach inside a moving vehicle and shall attempt to move out of the path of the moving vehicle. It just sounds like it's pretty consistent with what you have there. And then looking at the verbal warning in the model policy, the law enforcement officer shall issue a verbal warning when feasible and have a reasonable basis for believing that the warning was heard and understood by the individual to whom the warning is directed prior to using deadly force against the individual, which also sounds consistent, at least close to what you were saying the policy looks like. And then in exhausting all other means before the use of deadly force, let's see, shall not use deadly force against another person unless all of the following conditions are met. There's an objectively reasonable belief that deadly force is necessary, has exhausted all reasonable alternatives to the use of deadly force, and objectively reasonably believes that using deadly force would not unnecessarily endanger innocent people. So I just wonder if there's space for checking out this model policy and seeing how we can make that consistent with the policy that we have or ensuring that they are consistent when, you know, it sounds like the model policy that I'm looking at is largely consistent with what you're talking about in those small exceptions, but perhaps those slivers of exceptions are carved differently than the way that they're carved in the existing policy.
Commissioner Nanda, this is Adam Heffley, interim chief police. I've forgotten like eight times now. I do think that there is more consistency between their model policy and ours than there is difference. What I don't want to find ourselves in a position of is I have seen many agencies, entities, saying, "We absolutely meet these," and then they have an asterisk. And I don't feel like that is an honest conversation. And I would much rather say to you that our policy is 95% in line with what they're saying with this articulation of where it's different. I take this very seriously, as I would hope we all do, and I don't want to play games with words, but I do take your point. And I think there probably is more consistency than not and room to look at that to see if the languages are amenable to working together. That answers the question.
It does. This is Commissioner Nanda. I think that that's the important piece, is looking at, you know, where they have pulled from those sources to, and they cite where those model policies come from. If we can identify very specifically where we are similar and where we are different, and just look at, sometimes I think it's the nuance of language, right? Like, how do you sit an exception within a policy? Is it, you know, in the rule or is it an asterisk below the rule that is the exception? And I think that's an important piece of that policy language, so I'm glad that you've looked at that policy and are considering it.
Yeah, interim Chief Adam Heffley, I think it's extremely important for a frontline officer to understand it very well and not have concerns about how it's going to be interpreted. I think none of this policy works regardless of the language we choose to use if we don't train it and have people understand it so much that in an instant, in a situation which may take two seconds from beginning to end, or three seconds from beginning to end, they can't be doing that math then. We need to train that, make sure everybody understands the rules and how we're going to apply that. And I think we approach things from a position of you need to understand this, where we're going, where our intent is, and then train on that. But I am, again, not so arrogant to think I can't look at something else and see a better way to do it, and I'm willing to consider different language if it still meets the needs of the frontline officers.
Sorry, my, unfortunately, my question was very similar. Had you looked at other things on Lexipol that that maybe were closer? So you guys sorted it all out for me there.
Mayor Vingala, other questions before we open it to public comment? Seeing no questions, we'll go ahead and open this mouth for public comment. If you're in person, you can let Sheri know, or if you're online, you raise your hand feature, and she will call upon you. You'll have three minutes.
There's no one in the commission room, so if there's anyone online who would like to comment, please raise your hand or turn on your video. There's no public comment on this item.
Mayor Vingala, thank you. We'll bring it back to the commission for comments. This general item is to review and provide feedback, so that's what we're looking for here. that's what we're looking for here. Comments from the commission.
This is Commissioner Nanda. One other piece of the model policy that I appreciated, one is that they do prohibit neck holds. Shall not, no exceptions, chokeholds, strangleholds, lateral vascular neck restraints, carotid restraints, chest compressions, or any other tactics that restrict oxygen or blood flow to the head or neck. But there are also underneath that other prohibitions of the use of deadly force. And I thought that that, you know, sometimes we may think things go without saying, but like the list includes like a defensive property, can't use firearms as a club, can't fire warning shots, not when someone is fleeing who doesn't currently or actively pose immediate threat of death to other officers or another person. And sometimes I think that's helpful in policy to say when it's not appropriate in any circumstances, as well as when it is appropriate when we're looking at those exceptions. So that was a piece that I found very, I don't want to say poignant, but I think speaks directly to, you know, the issues in bias-based policing that has occurred in the country that can kind of make an officer think through that. Like when I train people, I say, you don't want to be saying that out loud when you're talking to someone in crisis for the first time. Because if you're doing it for the first time when you're talking to someone in crisis, you're going to mess it up. And so thinking through those, when no, as well, may be helpful within that policy too.
Adam Heffley, Interim Chief of Police. I completely understand your point there. My only, I guess as you say, my knee-jerk reaction to that is I hesitate to tell people when they can't do something because then I get lawyer in my head, and I think if I've told you when you can't, then you're going to take that list as the exhaustive list of times you can't, which is why typically, and I'm not saying that this is the ultimate correct answer, but typically we've done a, here are the instances in which you can do X. But there may be room for some specifics that we have great concern about. I'm going to ask Major Cooper to weigh in on this. Please.
Casey Cooper, so, you know, in terms of the Eight Can't Wait policy that you're referencing on banning outright altogether, through conversations with Lexipol, seeing the documents that they send us, and just being in law enforcement for nearly 20 years, when you look at, when you look at policies particular to use of force, when you do outright bans on an application, you limit the officer's ability to protect themselves and others from inbound violence or other threats. The premise behind the chokehold only being at the level of deadly force is that's deadly force. So if I'm fighting for my life, and you take that opportunity away from me with this policy that Eight Can't Wait have, the only thing I have left to defend myself with is a firearm. Whereas a chokehold or a firearm, I mean, I can go into some graphic stories, but I'm not going to do that for this setting, but what I'm saying is when we outright limit something in policy when it pertains to the use of force, it actually creates higher liability and officer safety risk that we have to be aware of as not only the command staff, but also leaders in this community. And, you know, I'd say where we have it within our policy that is a model policy, putting a deadly force is very appropriate in this. Doesn't mean we can't evaluate. It doesn't mean we can't look at other policies that are out there. Certainly willing to do that, but I wanted to give you the justification of why it is in our policy the way it's written.
May I have a think of other comments from commissioners?
Yeah, Mayor, I guess that if we have other towns and even whole states that are adopting some of this language, it doesn't hurt us to look specifically at some changes we could make, which would still leave room for the safety of officers, but move to meet closer to some expectations from our community. I appreciate the times that Mr. Cooper and Chief Heffley have mentioned liability. There are lots of times in the American legal system where the law interferes with justice, and any officer will be able to tell you that immediately. And the problem is that when we have these kind of exceptions or linguistic gymnastics, it creates distrust. And the only thing that I want for our officers here is for our community to trust them. So if all that would take was maybe investigating a little further or a little more closely, some different verbiage that still provides safety to officers, but is perhaps more nuanced in its language, I would, it would be worth the time to look at that.
May I have a think of other comments from commissioners?
This is Commissioner Bowley. I appreciate the presentation and the work and the thought that you've put into this. I think that this is some of the area that the community conversations need to incorporate. I mean, I think this is a great forum to have this discussion and to see how close the policies that we have are to what's recommended in the model policies for Eight Can't Wait. And I think that, you know, it's the conversations between the community and the department on an ongoing basis that will, you know, essentially bring the community and the police department together around these issues. And I appreciate that, you know, this is what we're trying to accomplish with our strategic plan. So from my perspective, you know, I appreciate the work that's gone into this, the communicate, the conversations that we've had. And I think we just need to continue to, you know, understand each other as we go through this process.
Mayor Finkley, I would only add to what Commissioner Bowley said there and that, as we talked about before, you know, this is one of those you probably never say is complete. It's something that's always in progress, you know, just like the other ones that are continually being looked on and looked at and changed and updated. You know, I did appreciate the work of Citygate, who did look at our policy, compared it to Eight Can't Wait, compared it to other places, and found it substantially in line. And as Commissioner Nanda said, I do think when I look at the model policy and our policy, I think they're substantially in line. You know, to Vice Mayor Shipley's point, I do think as you continue to look at that and have those conversations and continue to look at your use of force policy, I think you can use it to continue to build trust. And I would say, you know, there is, you know, again, kind of a nuanced way, not only of language, but in how you set the policy up, you know, where you start and where you end, and, you know, our policy kind of starts, you know, with use of force and then goes into respecting life, like in, you know, paragraph three, as opposed to the model policy has that almost exact language, but it's the very first sentence instead of, you know, in paragraph three. On one hand, that's pretty nuanced. They both say the same thing. On the other hand, by moving it to the front, do you make a bolder statement even with the exact same language? And so I do think there are some things like that you could continue to look at. But I'm, you know, I certainly think we're right in that zone where we need to be of balancing protection of our officers and good, strong policies that guide our community. So thank you for your work on that, and I hope you continue to look at it as we move forward. Mayor Finkley, any other comments? Again, we're receiving an update and providing feedback, so if there's no other feedback, seeing none, we'll move to regular gen item number three, which is to receive a report on decriminalization efforts and direct staff as appropriate. Looks like maybe Interim Chief Heffley is off the hook for the moment, and Tony Wheeler will give us this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Tony Wheeler, City Attorney. I hope Interim Chief Heffley does not go far, because we might call on him. Earlier this year, the commission expressed an interest in reviewing city codes to determine whether there are code provisions that could be amended or repealed. There was an interest in particularly looking at code provisions that have an impact on persons in poverty. So staff got together and developed a list for the commission's consideration. And this really is just an opportunity for the commission to have further discussion and to let staff know if we are sort of on the right track or if you'd like us to go in a different direction. So in our packet, we did provide a list of code provisions for you all to consider. That's certainly just a starting point. You all can add or subtract from that list. I can tell you that staff did meet with representatives of the Douglas County Anti-Poverty Work Group, Jill Jolliker and Jolene Anderson. They did submit a list of code provisions, and we did consider their list before we finalized ours. So with that, I would turn it back to the commission and allow you all to have a discussion about whether or how you'd like to direct staff.
Mayor Finkley, let's start with questions of staff. Mayor Finkley, I guess, Tony, make sure I understand the report. You did provide a list of, you know, particular ordinance sections in our packet. What is your recommendation of those? Are those just the ones you think we should consider? Or do you have a specific recommendation on each one of those, or what do you, how did that list come about, I guess?
That list was developed by staff as ones that seemed responsive to the limited discussion that the commission had earlier this year. They're not recommendations of the staff necessarily. It was our attempt to provide a starting point for the commission to have a discussion and maybe further define what it is the commission wants in this area.
Mayor Finkley, I appreciate that. Second question is, you then provided, I think, a very interesting list of all the crimes and a number associated with the years. My question was, are those arrests or are those convictions? Or what number does each column represent?
City Attorney Tony Wheeler, that is a list of the charges that have gone through municipal court. And Vicky Stanwicks, our court administrator, tracks those every year, and we thought that it would be beneficial for the commission to see five years' history of the charges that have gone through municipal court, so you can see what has been charged and the numbers per year. So if Vicky Stanwicks, our court administrator, has anything to add to that, that is just an overview of that table.
Mayor Finkley, Vicky, we can't hear you though.
Sorry about that. Vicky Stanwicks, Court Manager, I would just add that to what Tony said, that those are charges issued. So I can provide numbers on dispositions, you know, dismissals, convictions, things like that, but that's not what this report represents. This is strictly the charges that were issued during that timeframe.
Mayor Finkley, so for example, if I was charged with three different crimes, I would show up in three of these categories. I might have pled guilty to one, the other two dismissed, but all three of them are on this chart.
Vicky Stanwicks, Court Manager, that's correct. Yes, all three would be listed on that chart. Our system is not case-based, it is charge-based. So each charge that you are issued would be on this report, even if you, you know, some were dismissed. Correct.
Mayor Finkley, thank you. That's helpful. Other questions? By the way, I appreciate the chart. It's very interesting.
And this is Commissioner Nanda. I'm looking at some of the lake movement or traffic-based violations. And for example, the expired tag piece, generally there's an opportunity to present those tags, and then that gets dropped. Does that, so in that number, is that, you know, the total that were identified and written a citation that was then rescinded? Or was that the number of folks who did not rectify that within the time period?
Vicky Stanwicks, Court Manager, that number would represent the charges that were issued. So a number of those individuals would have come in with their registration, and that charge would have been dismissed, but that is not reflected here.
Mayor Finkley, any other questions before we open it up to a public comment?
Yeah, another one that, sort of, I guess, following in that hazy area is what inattentive driving, my recollection from my youth was that's something you could be moved down from, from some other infraction. So you wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to parse out, really that was someone who ran a stop sign, or really that's someone who was speeding and they moved it down to inattentive driving. Is that accurate?
Vicky Stanwicks, Court Manager, actually, the number that you see for inattentive driving represents the number of charges actually for inattentive driving, because this is for charges issued and not dispositions. And so this, a lot of times those are issued as a result of an accident, and someone was driving inattentively, and that's the charge that they were initially given. This would not represent all of the speeding tickets, red light violations that get amended to inattentive driving as part of a plea agreement.
Mayor Finkley, other questions? Seeing none, before we bring you back to comments from the commission, we'll open it to public comment. If any member of the public would like to make a comment on this item, raise your hand using the raise your hand feature, and Sherry will call upon.
Chris Flowers.
Hi, this is Chris Flowers, and I very much, there's just so many, I can't really go over all of them. I'm definitely for this movement. One I really want to mention is the topless ban. Manhattan, Kansas, has done away with their topless ban, and I think it's, they use it because it's sexist, because it is sexist to say that a woman can't have her top off, but a man can. And also, it's also not very trans-friendly because people are going to have to make a judgment about if someone's a man or a woman just based on looking at them. I mean, if you see them without their shirt on. So, and also, when it comes to homeless, like I've seen a homeless woman like changing her shirt behind an abandoned store next to us, and she kind of, I didn't know what she was doing because she had to put one shirt on to take the other shirt off, and it just seemed complicated. So I, that's one I definitely think we need to do, just completely do away with it because it's sexist and it's not trans-friendly. Next, I think, public urination. Where do people without bathrooms go to the bathroom at? We allow women to take out their breasts to breastfeed because it's not, it's not indecent, it's them feeding, it's them feeding their babies because it's a natural process. Isn't someone having a bladder full of urine needing to pee, isn't that a natural process? Is that, I mean, I don't think it's indecent to be peeing if you got to go, especially if you're homeless, because where are you going to go? Parking on unimproved surfaces, that's when we need to do. All that does is just try to keep property values up, but I, with the affordable housing, we don't need laws that are just there to maintain property values. Like, that's something we need to do away with. One thing I was just curious about is the loud sound amplification. Like, I'm okay with that, but I've, just on deliveries, one time there is this car, and it was just parked there playing really loud music. So is someone allowed to play their So is someone allowed to play their radio that loud in their yard? If that's not allowed, should we be allowing someone to do the same with their car when it's basically? I mean, it's the same thing. It's just if it's coming from their car or like a radio. But I just wanted to say, I think we need more discussion about all this stuff because I think there's more that we can do than just what the city might be willing to do. I think we should do a lot more. So I do appreciate all the work that's been done with this. So just, I guess, thank you.
Is there any other public comment on this item? Jolene Anderson.
There I am. Sorry, I'm kind of technologically challenged. First of all, I want to say how happy I am that the City Attorney and Vicky Stanwicks have brought this before you. I'm speaking for myself only this evening because our group hadn't had a chance to get together. I am part of the Decriminalization of Poverty Work Group, specifically strategy to looking at fines, fees, and driver's license suspensions. We begin our work by looking at the city fines and fees schedule, which is like this, only about 10 pages, which seemed excessive to us. Most of these infractions have an $80 fine with a $63 court cost. So that felt like it really could exacerbate poverty. We did a history, the judges signed it. But we also went back to when Randy McGrath signed it. And these infractions looked the same. So we're really happy that you guys are now going over them because we thought maybe it might have been, you know, signed off on every year without being examined. We did see that some were obsolete. Several we felt could exacerbate poverty. For example, if you've got a young person just starting out in a clunker car, a truck throws a rock, breaks the windshield, they can't afford to get it fixed, they get an $80 fine with $63 court costs. Don't go to court because they know they can't pay anything. End up in jail for failure to appear and on and on and on. You can see how this can spiral downward and it unequally affects BIPOC people of color. Black people in Douglas County are 5% of the population, but almost a third of the jail. So we're really happy that you're looking into this. According to Sam Natalia, Kansas Holistic Defenders, well over 60% of people in municipal court who are accused of misdemeanors are indigent. So in an article in the Journal World, August 25th, pointed out that municipal court generally brings in enough money through fines, fees, and bail revocations. They bring in more money to general fund and general fund pays out. But in 2020, it was the opposite. General fund had to subsidize court, probably because of COVID. So what we're asking you to do is pretty onerous. We understand it's a big undertaking. Municipal court needs to be financed, but not really on the court people. So thank you for taking this on. I do appreciate it.
Mayor, no one else has indicated they wish to provide comment on this item.
Mayor Fingalai, thank you. I'll bring it back to Commission for, again, the item is to receive the report and I guess providing feedback. I guess I do have a question. As I recall from law school, early on in my career, doing some traffic work, a lot of these are the like standard traffic ordinances. I mean, we don't, some of these might be our own internal ordinances, but many of them are either the standard traffic ordinance that we adopt or the equivalent from state law. Is that, am I remembering that correctly?
City Attorney Tony Wheeler, yes, that is correct. And Elizabeth Hafoka, our City Prosecutor, is also on the call if you have any more specific questions along the lines of the standard traffic ordinance.
Mayor Fingalai, I guess when I, so when I think about some of these more obscure ones, those aren't ones that we drafted. These are the ones that come down to us basically through the STO every year.
Elizabeth Hafoka, Supervising City Prosecutor. I'm not sure which list you are looking at and which ones you're talking about are obscure, but a good way to think about it is those ordinances that start with chapter 17, 17-410 or 17-411, those are part of our city code and not part of the standard traffic ordinance. So we either took subsections from the standard traffic ordinance and amended them or added to them, or we enacted our own ordinance for the city. But all of the other STOs that are listed, 1 through 200, those are part of the standard traffic ordinance and most of those have a state statute, a corresponding state statute. There's a few, inattentive driving, there are some others that don't have a state statute, but are still part of that standard traffic ordinance that is adopted by many cities here in the state.
Mayor Fingalai. And maybe this is a question for interim chief Heffley. You know, some of these, I mean, I don't know, do the officers sit around and study these, you know, like, again, some of these more obscure ones, like improperly mounted equipment lamps? I mean, are you training people on these or is it, are these the sorts of things that come up after the fact? Like, some of these would come up like with an accident or something happened? And then you're trying to figure out what applies to see who might be liable? Or how, I guess, are officers trained on these different STOs?
Both. So as part of your academy training, you do go through STO handbook and talk about STOs that that potentially will affect traffic enforcement that you may be performing. Many times, these STOs do come up during traffic crash investigation. There are some implications for some of the STOs that have been referenced tonight that that do require serious consideration. I heard the example of a cracked windshield. And a simple crack in a windshield is not likely to draw the attention of a patrol officer. But a windshield that is spidered, I think is the terminology that we still use, may be obstructed and lead to a traffic crash. And it's not our desire to be punitive in nature on things like that. In fact, we have at times, and I would like to see us support further, some of our charity programs where when we find somebody in a situation like that, that can't afford to replace, can't afford to replace a windshield, that we use some of our Blue Santa or some of our projects like that to support that outcome. Similar things with child safety seats and some of these. I am hesitant to comment on whether or not that ordinance should be in place because I've tried to hold the line of law enforcement belongs in the conversation of how we enforce and how that practically plays out and not really legislating anything. But I just wanted to bring that up as there are some consequences to not having some of these. But long, roundabout way to answer your question, and I'm pretty sure I forgot to say interim chief Adam Heffley at the beginning of this, which has gotten to be comedy at this point. But to answer your question directly, officers are trained on STOs, all of them, at least some point during their training academy. There are things, as you mentioned, I think, lights, properly affixed lights, that you likely will never see until a traffic crash is a result of a missing light, or at least it could come into play. I wouldn't even go so far as to say it's the result or the cause of it. And those things are looked up. These books are kept with officers and we study them when necessary. But we do train on all these to answer that question.
Mayor Fingalai, thank you. That's helpful. And I guess that is consistent with my experience. I mean, again, spilling the load on the highway. If someone spills the load on the highway, you typically don't write them a ticket. You help clean it up. But if the spill causes someone to wreck and then you're trying to investigate who's at fault, then you write them a ticket to show that fault, you know, the fault was on them. So again, again, I think there's some purposes for some of these that might not be apparent in, you know, just someone driving down the road. Anyway, that was my question. Other questions, comments, thoughts?
This is Commissioner Nada. I think that Chief Heffley speaks to, and I'm sorry, I'm going to take this to a philosophical place for a minute, kind of the complication with what I've mentioned previously, that we're asking law enforcement to do work that shouldn't necessarily be law enforcement in some circumstances. For example, a cracked windshield or a child safety seat. Jaywalking is, you know, one of the ordinances that were brought by our city attorneys. And, you know, communities have developed to say, like, this is a thing. We, as a community, have general consensus around not being a good thing, not being a safe thing, a thing that puts individuals as well as the community in danger. And so we've criminalized it rather than the much more difficult task of saying, how do we say as a community, these are things that we don't want to see happening because it puts individuals or others around those individuals in harm's way? How do we create a system or a code or a conversation or a system, if I didn't already say system, where we say, we have a community, we as a community have agreed that these are not ideal behaviors for a community or within the standards or values that we've set as a community? That doesn't mean that it's a crime if that occurs. How do we say, you know, get your windshield fixed? Don't ignore it, right? Because that is dangerous. But to someone who can't afford that, it may be more dangerous in food insecurity, housing insecurity, et cetera, to get that windshield fixed, even though it satisfies that community standard. Jaywalking, clearly very dangerous. Is it a crime? Why have we criminalized it? And so I kind of went down this philosophical rabbit hole of how do we actually address these issues that are largely safety issues or community value-based issues? So that we can create the expectation that we're helping our community reach those standards rather than punishing them for not reaching those standards. And I think that that's, for me, kind of the heart of this dialogue. There are things that we don't want to say are okay, but to punish for them is not the ideal response, like for aggressive panhandling, parking on unimproved surfaces, even when we're looking at like, what does that do with property value or something like that? If we're criminalizing decreasing property value, maybe, maybe we can reassess that and really have a better conversation around that. But that is an onerous task. That is huge. I mean, just like Jolene said, thank you and I can't believe, good luck, essentially, because it is a really big conversation if we are really having a conversation about having an impact on how we address the behaviors and expectations and outcomes for the members of our community.
Commissioner Bulley. Commissioner Nada, I think that we're engaged in that work in a couple of ways. One, through our strategic plan. And I think that's exactly what we're trying to do with our strategic plan. And in another smaller example, that's what we're doing with the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program. All those signs out there about how we stop, you know, we slow down. I mean, that is the encouragement that we're, that we're essentially putting together with our statutes, our code, saying this is what we as a community value. I think that we're on that and I appreciate your interest in it, but I mean, this is the work that we're engaged in.
This is Commissioner Nada. I totally agree that we are engaged in the work. I think that the conversation around criminalizing behaviors is the piece that is in front of us tonight, that is an essential part of that conversation and moving it forward.
Mr. Mayor, if I can add one piece, please. Interim chief Adam Heffley, one thing I did want to provide for some context is we do have what, and we've always had what we call a fix-it ticket. It is not in our interest to pull people over for a headlight or a taillight to punish them financially. One of my, I was never somebody who really enjoyed writing citations. It's part of the job, but it's just not something I enjoyed. And I think you'd find a lot of people that felt the same way. But what I did when I found a situation where it was a headlight, a taillight out or something like that is take the time to explain to somebody, here's, here's how you fix this. If you don't know, I'll walk you through it. I know a little bit about cars enough to break something. But I'll talk you through this process. I'll tell you what you need. And then I'll tell you how to take this down and get this ticket zeroed out at the municipal court. And that is where, and I maybe misheard, where I like to be as a police officer. I like to find a funding source to fix that windshield. That's a community thing, but it's also a me thing. Because officers need that positive interaction, just as much as people need to see us having it. You know, we deal with so much of the people getting hit crossing the street or, you know, I have very strong opinions on child safety seats and it's just because of some, some things I've been involved in that I just care to forget. But I do think we are trying to do some of those positive things and I would like to see stand up additional resources like that. If you have somebody that can't afford to fix that windshield, that's a great place for us to be, us, the Police Department or the city or an outside group, somebody. That is a spot that needs to be filled, in my opinion. Thank you for letting me add to that.
This is Commissioner Nada, one last time and then I swear I shut up. I think for me, that's where that philosophical piece sits is, you know, we have historically put that in the criminal code because we say that's a standard we don't want our community to fail reaching. But is there an alternative in creating that alternative that is not within the criminal code, but is a different kind of code entirely? Where would that sit?
Vice Mayor Shipley, yeah, I wonder if we're, you know, if we're allowed to give, if the city's allowed to give warnings, if, as chief Heffley suggested, these fix-it tickets, can we have a list of those things that are that can be addressed by other means, but which we could have a means of stopping and saying, hey, this is what we do here. We would prefer you not have such a loud radio or we would prefer you not park 10 cars in your yard, but it's not a ticketable offense. Could we make a list of things like that and have a way to address them that is outside of, frankly, doesn't burden the police, for example, with what is essentially, in most cases, a code enforcement issues?
This is Commissioner Larson.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Go ahead.
I was, I was just going to say that, you know, I, you know, I've done some work for municipalities and, you know, Commissioner Shipley, you're correct. I mean, a car balked in a front yard, is that a code violation or is it balking on the grass? Do you write up a, you know, criminal ticket or do you write up a code enforcement ticket? And you know, sometimes you start with one or the other. And you know, all you're trying to do is, you know, get the car off the, off the front lawn. So I do think there is some, you know, some flexibility there. And I guess the other, you know, philosophical part of this, you know, goes to, you know, giving the flexibility and creating the flexibility, maybe like giving as light word, you know, to our, you know, to the prosecutors and to the judge. You know, more so than sometimes in some places you have. I mean, I know I've been, you know, and one of the, one of the folks being a lawyer is everyone calls and says, hey, can you help me fix a ticket? You know, and so you, you call around and you find out different cities, you know, do things differently, you know? There's one particular city, you know, around us that you have to hire a lawyer to get the ticket amended. You know, there's another city where you have to show up. You know, you can't call in, you can't, you know, you can't do it by mail. You know, we have much more flexibility here in Lawrence, but that's an example of, you know, continuing to leave those options open. You know, there's some places that won't, they will only dismiss, but you always have to pay cold costs. They won't, you know, they'll, if you get the ticket, you have to pay cold costs, whereas other places, if they dismiss, it's dismissed, and you don't pay anything. You know, so again, you know, a lot of these issues with the anti-poverty group, you know, I certainly have seen, you know, people get in the spiral and how we can help break that spiral. You know, even for serious crime or, you know, a crime that we all agree was a crime that no one disputes, you can still get someone caught in that spiral. You know, often talked about are driving without insurance, driving on suspended license. How do you help break people out of that poverty cycle? You know, it's not always on the crime side, but on the collection and prosecution and then the judge side of that. So I think it's all, you know, part and parcel that we have to continue to to look at and try to find that right balance for Lawrence. Commissioner Larson, sorry for cutting you off.
Yeah, yeah, that's okay. Commissioner Larson, I had a question. When a fine is assessed at municipal court, is there an option for someone to work it off with community service?
Vicky Stanwitz, Court Manager, yes. That option to pay your fines with community service is offered to everyone. The only part of the fine that they cannot work off would be the portion of court costs that is submitted to the state, and that's by statute. And well, currently, we don't let them work court cost off at all. It's just the fine. But that is offered to anyone who would be interested in doing that, and that is paid at $10 an hour towards fines.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner Nanda. I totally lied, sorry. I think that when, when we're talking about like, the options that people have, even if it's a fix-it ticket versus a code violation, cumulative citations and cumulative eventually misdemeanors have a serious impact long term on any individual who experiences the criminal justice system. Whereas a code violation may not be something that they have to report to an employer, may not be something that will impact their ability to get financial aid and other options that would lift them out of poverty in the future. And so I think that there is value in removing that from the criminal code. And when we talk about being able to do community service as an option for someone who can't afford it, when someone is working three part-time or full-time minimum wage jobs, taking time off to do that is just as costly, and sometimes long-term more costly for those individuals than paying the fines that they can't pay or have their diversion rescinded because they weren't able to pay that, or, you know, whatever other outcome they may be experiencing.
Mayor Finkley, maybe this question's for Elizabeth. Is there some flexibility or some, you know, some change that you, as you experience as a prosecutor, that you'd like to see a change to give you more flexibility on certain things, or you feel like you have the tools to to treat cases differently? Individualistically, I guess.
Elizabeth, the focus supervising city prosecutor. I feel like the prosecutor's office does have the tools, and I feel like the court has the tools to sort of work with people who are charged with crimes and to enforce the laws and then have some sort of accountability in sentencing. I think that there are certain individuals who could benefit from programs, more programs to deal with substance abuse. I think that substance abuse is a huge contributing factor to significant majority of people who come through our court system. A lot of times individuals are facing challenges with their mental health, and those issues can be compounded by drug and alcohol use, drug and alcohol overuse. So we do have some flexibility in plea agreements that we do, and then sentencing recommendations that I make to the court and the sentence that the court imposes as far as community service work in lieu of fines or diversion fees. And then there are options for, you know, if someone must serve jail time, there are certainly options for to do some confinement on house arrest. I think that the more programs that we have for people to be involved with meaningful programs for treatment, and then meaningful supervision for those people to ensure that they have access to those treatment programs and follow through with holding them accountable in those treatment programs. I think that can benefit people that find themselves in court and may prevent them from falling into the spiral of, you know, returning and, you know, constantly finding themselves facing problems with law violations and the municipal court system.
Mayor Finkley, thank you for that. Mayor Finkley, other comments, direction, thoughts?
This is Commissioner Nanda. I would like for this conversation to continue. I think particularly looking at the recommendations by the city attorneys or not recommendations about the list of items that they felt fell under the parameters that we developed or that were stated. Things like removing contents from a refuse container, loud sound amplification, parking on unimproved services, aggressive panhandling, hours of operation for the parks, liquor, malt beverages, camping, indecent exposure, I think, would be a different conversation. And I think that particularly talking about genitalia, buttocks. I do think that there is an issue regarding sex, regarding breast exposure, but I also think that an argument of the feminist perspective, when not arguing for equal pay among the sexes, is a little bit hypocritical. Jaywalking is, I think, worth having a conversation about what that looks like sitting in our criminal code and the impact that that does have on folks. The impact that it would have on our municipal court system. And what are alternatives to engaging those differently in our community, like Commissioner Bulley said, you know, we are having those conversations. How do we take that to the next level? And really decriminalize poverty. I mean, I think that there are more serious issues like child safety. It is imperative to have children in child seats. How do we make sure that happens without furthering that spiral of poverty or criminality and having that long-term impact on folks' lives?
Mayor Finkley, other comments? I do think it's, as always, this is our theme tonight of everything's a, nothing's completed, everything is a work in progress. And I think that's true. And again, I, I mean, I think one of the reasons I asked the questions of Elizabeth and others, I think, you know, we want to look at this not just on the on the crime side, but if there's other things that should be brought forward to us from the city attorney's office, from the judge, from the fine schedule, whatever, I think, you know, I think those are things we could continue to look at and think about and provide input on and receive input for the public on. So.
This is Commissioner Bulley. I also appreciate getting the the list of the charges that have been made. I think that helps us put this in perspective.
Mayor Finkley, I echo that for sure, that I thought that was a very useful, useful chart. And I do think it's something maybe, you know, that we could continue to receive and and maybe there is a report, you know, related to, you know, comparing that to how many, you know, convictions or whatever, so we could see how some of that happened. I'm not sure it would provide much, but maybe it would. You know, if there's other information that Vicky or Elizabeth think would be helpful to us, I think it'd be useful in these conversations. I just don't, no, I'm not about to ask for the right thing, but if there is, I'd be open to it. Okay, any other comments on this?
So Mayor, this is maybe the most nebulous of the things we've done tonight, and I might go back and ask you about the first thing, but how I, often in the past, I've said, okay, when am I going to see this again, or what am I going to see, or how's this gonna? So what, what should I expect? Should I expect this working group to focus on a couple of these items and make very, even more specific recommendations? What, what should I expect to see? How can I expect? And how can I expect the public to engage in discussions on this?
Mayor Finkley, is that a question for me or for staff? I mean, I
We seem to agree that there are things here or there's something here. But I don't, I don't hear specific steps that we should take to address it.
If I may, City Manager Craig Owens, and not to sound too bureaucratic on it, but we, why don't you give us a week or two, and we will bring back suggestions on how we can move this forward rather than trying to make it up here or make some promises on process? So next commission meeting, or maybe the one after, we will bring you back a report on the process. So planning to plan. But hopefully that will give you something more worthwhile to react to.
Thank you. And Vice Mayor, and as much as it's out of order, I have the same question about the first item we talked about. The police department were lovely enough to ask us a couple of specific items. And they talked about the engagement that they want to do, but we didn't ask for a timeline or how that might look, or how they'd like to engage, when we might want to see those items again, specifically the drones and K-9 unit policies. So I just, you know, in the past, I've, I've looked for deadlines, so I wanted to give us that, that space here.
If I can weigh in on that one, Adam Heffley, interim chief of police. The Public Safety Camera System Draft Policy I have ready for public consumption. The K-9 policy is is part of our current policy that's in place on our website. And then the website, which I owe you guys, I want to get to a point where we've loaded all of the material and gone back and did some cleanup of design and stuff. I'm pressing to have the website ready for public engagement in the next two weeks. I'm going to dodge things getting thrown in my office shortly, so if I disappear from the screen, you know what happened. That is the goal. But I do need to set realistic expectations in that we're at capacity with a lot of things, but all these things are important, is where I'm going with this. My goal is to publicize the draft policy ASAP, like in the next couple of days, so that we can get feedback on concerns. I am going to reach out to some stakeholders that I previously identified as have a lot of voiced a lot of opinion when we talk about drones. And then policy on K-9s is out there, but it may be one we want to re-highlight and push to the forefront, just so there's understanding and talk about it if there isn't. And then website. So at least that's what I have on those three.
Mayor Finkley, I thank you for that. Thank you. Everyone, Vicky for your statistics, Elizabeth and Tony for your report, and we look forward to further discussion. So if nothing else, we'll move to commission items.
This is Commissioner Nanda. I have one item. I recently started a school program which has me in class much of my life. But it includes Tuesdays during the day. And CJCC meetings are on Tuesdays, I believe, from 11:00 to 12:30, and it breaks my heart into a million pieces to say I need to hand that to another commissioner, and you may need some time to think about that. I will say, Mayor, obviously, you have legal experience, so that might be a space in which you want to operate. I am currently the chair of the racial and ethnic disparities work group. I am stepping down from that position as well. Although I may still be participating, but that may be an expectation or an opportunity for whoever takes that on. But I just wanted to put that out there for my fellow commissioners to consider.
Mayor Finkley, yes, let's talk about that. I think a lot of the commissioners would be good at that position, but I might be able to step into that. I have some Tuesdays that have some legal things, but we might be able to work around that. But we can, let's, let's all think about that, maybe discuss it next week.
Commissioner Larson, Mayor, if you decide you don't want to take over that role, I was in the CJCC before Commissioner Nanda came on board and passed it on to her due to her background. I would definitely be interested in reentering that if you decided not to.
This is Commissioner Nanda. I will say their next meeting is next Tuesday at the Flori Building from 11:00 to 12:30. So I don't know if, at the very least, if a commissioner can attend that meeting just so we can maintain the thread of, you know, knowing what's going on in that group and the reports that are occurring as well.
Mayor Finkley, I actually have a deposition all day next Tuesday, so I will not be available next Tuesday for that. Commissioner Larson, is that something you might be able to attend?
Yeah, Commissioner Larson, yeah, I can attend it next Tuesday.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Finkley, other commission items? Seeing none? City manager's report?
City Manager Craig Owens, we've just got a couple of items here. I'll draw your attention to the Popular Annual Financial Report. Again, this is a report that cities started producing. The Government Finance Officers Association started this new program a few years back, and we have now produced, I believe this is our second one, that Andrew Davis, who was our intern until recent but Andrew Davis, who was our intern until recently, uh, did a lot of work on that. I recognize, uh, his efforts on that. But the whole intent is to make, um, our financial data accessible to everybody. You don't need to be an accountant to understand where your financial position are, uh, is in your city. So we're pretty excited about that. The, um, the other, uh, the other items, we're happy to answer any questions on. I will note the building report is in there and it's, uh, it had, you know, some optics and activity.
Mayor Finkel, any questions for Craig? Seeing none, this is a public hearing item. If any member of the public would like to speak on those three items in the City Manager's report, please raise your hand using the raise your hand feature.
Mayor, there's no public comment on this item.
Mayor Finkel, I, thank you. That takes us to the calendar. Any questions or comments on the calendar? Seeing none. How about a motion to adjourn?
Commissioner Ananda, I move to adjourn.
Commissioner Larson, second.
Mayor Finkel, there's a motion by Commissioner Ananda, a second by Commissioner Lawson. Commissioner Ananda?
Aye.
Commissioner Lawson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shipley?
Aye.
Commissioner Bulley?
Aye.
Mayor Finkel, aye, passes five to zero. Thank you, and we will see you next week.